We call this meeting to order. The invocation is going to be done by Ms. Linda Thompson.
Let us pray. All wise and mighty God, we come to you this afternoon asking for your divine guidance. We're asking that you lead, guide, and direct us in decisions that are for the betterment of our community. Help us to live united and blessed lives that will inspire those who come behind us. Help us to favor and appreciate our days, the days behind as well as the days ahead. Unite us under your government to do your will and to do it in your way. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anyone have anything to pull from the consent agenda?
Move the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to move with the exception of number five. I just have a comment to make. You ready to go with that?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to draw the attention of this commission, which I know we already know, but also this large audience today and the viewing audience, to number five, which is the adoption of the resolution to direct the expenditure of opioid settlement funds for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. With so many things happening in our lives at all levels here, it's easy to forget that the opioid crisis is still very much here, and very much here in New Hanover County. And for many years now, I hate to say, we've been making direct efforts from New Hanover County to address this. It's been widely reported there's been a settlement of many of the major corporations who made the opioids, of which New Hanover County will receive thirty-three point eight million dollars over eighteen years. So yahoo, we got some money, but what do we do with it? I was so proud to read over this item here, and I won't go through the whole thing to see what the breakdown is and what we're putting into our community directly. We have immediately, meaning, you know, not over the eighteen years, but in the next, I guess, eighteen months, we'll be putting fifteen point nine million dollars into a variety of projects. I believe we authorized eighteen different strategies. Three point six six million dollars is going to a variety of issues that Coastal Horizons will be doing. Many of you know them within our community, they do fabulous work. One point eight seven million dollars is going to a really wonderful program called Tides, T-I-D-E-S, run by Dr. John Stone. If you don't know anything about it, I won't go into it now, go home and Google it. Take a box of Kleenex with you, is all I gotta say. The work that Dr. John Stone has been doing very quietly within our community in saving the lives of women and children is outstanding. And with his opioid settlement money, we're putting another one point eight seven million dollars into his program. And also, of course, four point seven million dollars to Healing Place, which is a wonderful facility right over there at Medical Center Drive. If you haven't gone by to take a look at it, please drive down. It's an amazing thing for two hundred beds, men and women, one hundred women, one hundred men, free of charge. If you want to get your life back together, if you want to get off drugs or alcohol, whatever you need, that's what New Hanover County is doing for you. And in that case, in conjunction with Trillium Health Resources as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll leave the rest there, but I was just literally moved by how much we've been doing. And I think it often gets glossed over with all these other important items.
I agree.
Thank you. And with that, I'll move the, I'll second the consent agenda to Commissioner Scalise's first.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that takes us to the presentation by Boys and Girls Club of Southeastern North Carolina, member and North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, Youth Voice, two thousand twenty-four delegate, Mrs. Zahin Barreto?
It's Zehani Barreto.
Say, say.
Zehani.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Good afternoon, everyone. First and foremost, I want to express my gratitude to each and every one of you for dedicating your time to listening to me today. The club has been instrumental in helping me step out of my shell, a process that began in seventh grade. Initially, I was quite reserved and only interacted with people that I already knew and that I already felt comfortable around. However, being surrounded by many social and outgoing leaders daily has transformed me into a social and outgoing leader myself. This transformation has opened up many numerous, many and numerous opportunities for me, such as performing at the Queens Coalition Youth Voice and speaking in front of you today. My time at the club during my seventh and eighth grade years has significantly boosted my social skills, which I never imagined that I could achieve. Interacting with new faces and engaging in conversations with different people every day played a huge role in that change. Another significant opportunity that contributed to my growth as a leader is working as a youth worker at the club. I work on the youth side, engaging with the younger kids and handling parent drop-offs, which initially felt nerve-wracking, but has become something that I truly enjoy to this day. Last summer, I even took on the role of manager for the youth workers, and it was a leadership position that I was honored to hold, knowing that Ms. Leandra chose me for the role. While I believe I have developed strong leadership skills, I recognize that there is still much more for me to learn and many more mistakes to be made on my journey to become the leader that I aspire to be. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today, and once again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Commissioner Barville?
Ms. Barreto, it's so great to see you here today representing the Boys and Girls Clubs. You're gonna have a phenomenal experience when you go to Winston-Salem and be a part of our state conference and meet other youth across our state and interact with them and kind of glean from them as they're gonna glean from you as well. Looking forward to seeing you when we get there and hope that you have a great time. You're gonna learn a lot about county government, some of the work that we do here, just in New Hanover County, but also across the state as well. And this will be an opportunity for you to, again, make some connections that will probably last your lifetime.
Thank you.
Let's get our picture made.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Quickly, Ms. Barreto, Ms. Barreto? Hi. I was going to make the comment that the only thing that I didn't believe about your presentation is your second thought you had about your own social skills. Your presentation was fantastic.
It was.
You should feel really great about it and just propel on through to the conference. You're doing great.
Fantastic.
Allison Snell.
Good afternoon. I am Allison Snell, the Tax Administrator, and this is our two thousand twenty-three annual tax settlement report. It's so good the computer couldn't handle it. If you would like, I can go ahead and talk through it.
You don't need that?
Yeah, yeah, don't, she, I think Allison's well prepared.
Okay.
For our New Hanover County General Fund, this year we levied two hundred and seventeen point seven million dollars in property taxes. Of that amount, we have an uncollected balance of eight hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and five cent, less than a million dollars on our current year taxes, and that's just outstanding. That leaves us with a collection percentage of ninety-nine point six one. Our debt services, we levied twelve point two million dollars with an uncollected balance of forty-eight thousand, five hundred, twenty-eight dollars and forty cent. That leaves us with a collection rate for our debt service at ninety-nine point six I'd love to show you our five-year comparison. It looks good. It looks real good. Moving on, we'll cover our fire district. We levied this year fourteen point two million dollars. Of that amount, we have an uncollected balance of sixty-one thousand, nine hundred, forty-three dollars and ninety cent. That leaves us with a collection rate of ninety-nine point five six percent for the fire district. I can tell you that that five-year comparison report also looks really good. And before I conclude my presentation, I really would like to just take a moment and call your attention to the back row. If you guys could wave. These are just a few members of our team that does our collections for the office. Now, of course, we had to leave some behind because someone has to be there to take those payments. But I really just want to call your attention to these folks and just, when you give praise to me, I love to hear it, but I really want those folks to receive that directly. I'm so proud of them and I'm thankful for all they do. They make me look good every year, and I appreciate all they do.
Thank you, Allison.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Snell?
Yes, sir.
You constantly strive for perfection, and you're almost there. Ninety-nine point six nine percent collected, that's pretty darn outstanding. You and your team every year do a phenomenal job. You're always above ninety-nine percent. And unless the citizens here know that we're trying to collect every amount of money that we can so we can serve them to the greatest extent possible. And I know that sometimes it's a daunting job for some of your staff as they're talking with folks and may not hear, have some of the best conversations, and some people may not want to pay their taxes, but I appreciate the great work that you all are doing and know that your labor is indeed not in vain. Keep, keep doing what you're doing.
We will do our best.
Thank you, ma'am. Any more questions?
That deserves a round of applause, too.
Is there a motion to approve the tax settlement?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Number twelve, consideration of two construction contract awards related to the last frontier infrastructure project. I believe we're gonna have Mr. Gradle.
Good afternoon. In September of two thousand twenty-two, this governing body approved an interlocal agreement with the Cape Fear Public Utility Authority, which provides the, which provides the framework for the installation of water and wastewater mains in the northern part of the county, which has been referred to as the last frontier project. The addition of this infrastructure dovetails with existing CFPUA projects in the same area, which will result in the ability to develop the surrounding acreage for both residential and commercial purposes. We expect this project will provide significant economic benefits to the county, including long-term growth, including growth of the tax base, as well as additional housing opportunities. This slide, I'm sorry, this project includes approximately eight miles of water mains and ten miles of wastewater mains. The slide, this slide shows the location of the mains, with the water mains being the blue lines and the wastewater mains being the dotted yellow lines. There was a question at a gender review about Holly Shelter Road and whether the, we were running both water and wastewater lines on that road all the way to Island Creek. This map shows that the planned water and wastewater mains on Holly Shelter Road stop just beyond the Holly Shelter, the planned Holly Shelter Business Park, do not extend all the way to Island Creek. So our business park is in this area, there's the end of the water and wastewater mains, and then Island Creek is right there, so it stops short of that. There's also an Island Creek subdivision that is on Sidbury Road, right here. And as shown on this map, wastewater lines do extend to that subdivision, and it's our expectation that private development will install the water mains in the future. This slide overlays the last frontier mains, with the other mains being funded by the CFPUA in the same area. It shows the complete picture of the infrastructure additions occurring in the northern area of the county. Under the terms of the interlocal agreement, CFPUA has the primary responsibility for managing both the design, bidding, and construction phases of the project, and once it is completed, the CFPUA will maintain and repair this infrastructure. The county's primary responsibility is to fund the cost of the project. We expect that most of the costs associated with the project will be funded with a state budget grant that was announced last year, with any excess, any amount in excess of that grant being funded by DUD. And as noted here, there's regular cooperation between the CFPUA and the county staff in advancing this project. Initially, the estimated cost of the total project was three million dollars for design costs, twenty-three point five million in construction costs, for a total of twenty-six point five million. By November of two thousand twenty-three, due to inflation and industry demand, the estimated cost had risen to forty-two point six million. Fortunately, as we will see in just a moment, the costs received for the first two segments have come in below the high estimate, with one of them coming in even below the original estimate. As shown on this slide, the project has been divided into six segments, with a design and RFP process for all segments being managed by CFPUA. For the first two segments, design and bidding for the construction has been completed. Design completion and construction for the remaining four segments is expected to occur in this, in December two thousand twenty-four to the February twenty twenty-five timeframe. As noted here, assuming the approval of the contracts today, construction of the first two segments are expected to be completed by December of two thousand twenty-five. The other four segments have an estimated completion timeframe with the first quarter of two thousand twenty-six. Today's agenda item is to consider approving the awards of the construction contracts for the first two segments. Each of the two segments received four bids. For Greenview West, the low-responsive bid was SNL Contracting LLC at a cost of three million, three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, six dollars. For Sidbury Road and Greenview, Greenview East, the low-responsive bid was submitted by TA Loving Company at a cost of three million, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred dollars. After including the fees paid to the design firm to oversee the construction, this slide shows how the current cost compared to prior two cost estimates. As shown, the Greenview West bid is between the original estimate and the revised estimate, while the Sidbury-Greenview bid is almost one million dollars lower than the original estimate. We have Gary McSmith with the seat, with us today. Mr. McSmith is the chief engineer with CFPUA. He can comment on the environment for infrastructure construction, infrastructure construction, infrastructure construction, and answer any questions that you may have. At the conclusion of Mr. McSmith's time, staff recommends that the board approve the awards of the construction contracts as presented.
I'd be glad to help you with any questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Gary, thanks for coming out and doing this. I know we all were really pleasantly surprised looking at these numbers here as they come down. And I know it's too early to say it's a trend in overall construction prices, but right now, today, at this time, this estimate, it looks like it comes in three point two million dollars less than the estimates that were coming in a little bit more than a year ago. Do you have an explanation, or can you shed some light on this?
Yes, Commissioner. The, in that bidding environment for the project that was the basis of this estimate, we were only getting about two point four bidders per project that was bid. And so there, there was, there just weren't that many bidders in the marketplace that was driving up the price. In that year, our average number of bidders was two point four. In this year, our average number of bidders is three point three. So we have a better bidding environment. Also, the estimate that was the basis, or the bid, the previous bid that was the basis of that higher estimate, was funded by federal funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, which had significant procurement requirements on the contractor. New Hanover County's project is now funded by North Carolina Reserve Funds by Special Appropriations. It still has excellent due diligence, but those requirements are less costly to execute. So the price has come down. We hope to see that going forward.
Just to put a little context behind this, in, gosh, I guess now the last three to four years, we've seen annual escalation of construction prices anywhere from twenty to thirty percent. So to be handed a piece of paper that shows that not happening, but indeed actually coming down by three point two million dollars in our line of work, that's, it's astounding. And I just hope is the beginning of a trend that will kind of bring some of these construction costs all across the board down to more sane levels. Gary, thank you so much for your, for your explanation.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Sir, I'd like to ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
On this project segments, just take for instance, Greenview West area, designs complete, bidding's complete, and construction, December of two thousand twenty-five, does that mean it'll be finished then or start then?
That means it'll be ready for activation.
Okay. And so the same with all the rest of them, quarter one of two thousand twenty-six?
That, that means they'll be ready to receive sewer flow.
Okay.
Now, all of, all of these on the sewer side would require developers to build pump stations to contribute. These are just spine utilities, but the development community has lined up and is waiting for these to be completed.
So we're kind of like the bank. We pay for it, and then as they hook up, they pay us back?
In this case, New Hanover County would benefit from an increase in tax base. There's no cost recovery established for these projects, nor is there cost recovery established for the large project that's receiving those, that CFPUA is building. But in, in all cases, we expect it's gonna cause a tremendous amount of growth in New Hanover County.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, just one other quick comment. Another part of this that doesn't get as much shine is the environmental part of it. Every one of these sewer lines it goes in, every one of these water lines it goes in means that there are not a series of septic tanks and more holes popped into our aquifer for pulling water out. And you start multiplying it times the number of developments that go there. This is great news for the northern part of our county, which of course has relied on the Castle Hain Aquifer for decades, half century, maybe even a full century. And it's about time it got some relief. So this is good news on an environmental side as well.
That's very true. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I guess, Chris, this is our version of TIF financing in a sense, tax increment financing, where we're funding the money upfront and...
Yes, sir, though we're not asking you to technically pledge the, the incremental revenues from the development to pay the debt, but it certainly could be argued to be a synthetic TIF in that regard.
It feels just like, I know we had these conversations, I guess, back in two thousand and nine, about Castle Hain Road in particular, and developers was trying to get that road developed, and where Swarthwith Farm is, and some other places in the area, and so the conversation was around doing TIF financing back then, but it didn't really get any legs. But this synthetic version, I think, is gonna be great for our community. And as you mentioned, the resources will come by development, and in the long term, you're gonna have more and more development taking place, which means that we'll get paid back through taxes down the road, so...
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve, if it's appropriate?
And, and we're approving both projects.
Yes, sir.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pass. Thank you, Mr. Snell. Next is the consideration of Castle Hain and Gordon Road Fire Stations Guaranteed Maximum Price Award and associated budget amendments. Mr., yes, sir?
Good afternoon. I come before you today to ask for your consent to award the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to the contract with Sammit Corporation, who is our construction manager at risk for both the Gordon Road Fire Station and the Castle Hain Road Fire Station. In May of two thousand twenty-three, Sammit started doing our construction management pre-con services. And since then, we have put it out to bid this past May, and the bids came in a little bit over budget, and we worked to value engineer that. So we've revised the, the final GMP down to what we feel like is the most responsible GMP by accepting value engineering that was not gonna be something we regret in a few years. So I asked that, that we award the amount of seven million, seven twenty-three, eight eighty-seven for the Castle Hain and ten million, one oh one, five oh eight for the Gordon Road Fire Station.
Okay. Any discussion?
Kevin, thank you for that. Thank you for the work that you put into this. Sammit, is this the first project they've done for us?
It's the first project, yes.
For those of you who are in the business, you already know that this is a national or international company. And the fact that we're attracting them here is really, I think, a positive sign, because they bring a wealth of experience and the ability to bring in large projects at a wonderful price, which is what they have done here. So, you know, it's a, it's a small thing, but doesn't go unnoticed by yourself, as well as others who watch this and other developers, that our, New Hanover County is attracting major attention nationally and internationally. And I think that's a real feather in your cap, Kevin, and Sarah's as well.
Yeah, we had a lot, a lot of competition for that CMR contract, very, very qualified firms.
Wonderful. I did have a quick question for Donnie, if you're there. Kevin, I know I wore you out on the agenda briefing on this, I just wanted to hear from Donnie's lips. You're okay without the bifold doors. You, you know, the, I was, you're a victim of your own success. I remember when you showed me those bifold doors on the fire station up there on Market Street, and I was so impressed about the speed and efficiency that they opened up. But you're okay in this case going with the high-speed overheads?
Yes, sir, we are. We did a lot of research on those doors. Back when we constructed the Ogden Station, the bifold was state-of-the-art for the speed and the reliability. But the standard roll-up doors have kind of upped their game in a good sense for us because it's made it a lot cheaper to use those types of doors versus the bifold, and we're expecting the resiliency to match that of the bifold doors.
Thank you.
Donnie, this didn't have anything to do with that, but I just wanted you to tell everybody, what is, what is it that our rating is worldwide?
Our rating is, we are a class-two rating for ISO or Insurance Services Office. That is the rating we carry throughout the unincorporated county.
And how many, how many places in the world have that?
There are several departments across the state that are rated at a class-two. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but... um, but we are an internationally accredited fire department, and there's only about 310 of us around the world.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Move that we approve the awards.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
We now move to public hearing. First one is application proposed Scottsdale Water Main Extension. Mr. Theo McClemmon? Let, let, let me say one more name, okay? This is a public hearing. We will open the public hearing in New Hanover County Fiscal Year 25, North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality Community Development Block. Infrastructure Grant CDBG-1. The purpose, purpose of the public hearing is to obtain citizen's views and to allow response from the public to funding proposals and answer any questions posed by citizens. Staff will present a detailed overview of New Hanover County CDBG-1 funding application and proposed project. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, we are open. Staff will now present the required information on this matter. The board will then receive public comments from the citizens.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to present the New Hanover County Community Development Block Grant Infrastructure Application for the Proposed Scottsdale Water Main Extension. Also, to add into the hearing record, information that is required by the funding agency. Residents of the Scottsdale community reported poor well water quality that impacts their drinking supply, and expressed concerns about high levels of iron that are detrimental to their appliances, clothing, and plumbing fixtures. Homeowners have reported, have repaired or replaced private wells at substantial cost. Connection to public water would require extension of water, of main water lines, which is not something members of the community, many of whom are on fixed incomes, would be able to afford. At the direction of management, staff is working with insight, planning, and development to prepare a $3 million CDBGI grant application that would provide partial funding to bring public water to the Scottsdale area by extending the main water lines. Cape Fear Public Utility Authority has prepared a preliminary engineering estimate of total project cost that is in your pocket. The grant application is due September 30th, with a decision expected in February. Informal citizen engagement meetings were held in Scottsdale on January 30th, April 9th, and January 16th to inform citizens of the potential project and to receive their feedback. Each meeting was well attended. About 50 residents with staff from the manager's office, planning, housing, health department, and Cape Fear Public Utilities were present. Residents voted to request a water station and connection to Cape Fear Public Utility. Partnering with the residents and Cape Fear Public Utility, a water station was installed in the Scottsdale, at the Scottsdale Community Center, with the official opening on July 16th. The initial study area for water connections were 81 parcels. Insight Planning and Development conducted a survey of income levels and water connection needs in the area. The project team combined income data, private well conditions, and engineering and construction affordability with funding agency guidelines, resulting in a project area of 57 parcels. This is a well-defined area that meets grant requirements. This map shows the Scottsdale community, which is adjacent to Highway 17, with parcels along Forest Trail and Creekwood Road. All parcels outlined in yellow represent the initial study area. This map zooms in on the shaded parcels of the previous map. The shaded area represents the 57 parcels within the proposed water main extension area, which includes parts of Stevens Church Road, McIntyre Trail, Forest Trail, and the western section of Creekwood Road. With that application summary, Mr. Chairman, I will now present information that is required by the funding agency. This information pertains to the purpose of the CDBG program, types of eligible water projects, cost covered by the grant, the county's past CDBG experience, and compliance requirements. First, the CDBGI program is designed to help a non-entitlement municipality or county to create a healthy living environment through financing, public water, and sewer infrastructure, and mitigate public and environmental health problems in areas where the percentage of low-to-moderate-income persons is at least 51%. The proposed project area has been determined to have a low-to-moderate income of, of at least 90%. Community development activities may include water and sewer, neighborhood, neighborhood revitalization, COVID-19-related projects, and economic development for job creation and retention. The maximum CDBGI award per applicant is $3 million every three years. There's no local match requirement. All awarded applicants are held to a 36- to 40-month grant period to start and complete their project. The CDBGI program supports a wide range of water infrastructure projects, including projects that resolve water loss in distribution systems, projects that extend public water to create, to, excuse me, to, that extends to areas with contaminated or dry wells, assist with low water pressure in public water systems, regionalize two or more water systems, and rehabilitate or replace a water treatment plant. The proposed project area was identified in the Cape Fear Public Utility Authority 10-year capital improvement plan 2012 through 2021. The cost potentially covered by CDBGI funds include construction, environmental review, engineering design, construction administration, legal activities, surveying, and grant administration. New Hanover County's previous CDBG experience includes a 2010 scattered site housing residential reconstruction project that was administered, administered by the planning department. If New Hanover County is awarded a CDBGI grant for Scottsdale Water Connections, the county must follow federal procurement requirements and other regulations for the project, which include the Americans with Disabilities Act, Section 504, Davis Bacon, Adoption of a Citizens Participation Plan, an Equal Opportunity Plan, Fair Housing Plan, Language Access Plan, and a Relocation Assistance Plan. In this particular project, no displacement nor relocation will occur because of the proposed grant-funded activity. Lastly, the advertisement for this hearing states that complaints, grievances, or requests for information regarding the grant application should be addressed to the county manager's office. A written response to complaints or requests for information will be sent within 15 business days where practical. A second public hearing is requested for August 19th to present the application for board approval. The application will be available for review during normal business hours at the New Hanover County Government Center. Mr. Chairman, that ends the required statements. To summarize, the Scottsdale Water Main Extension application will be competitive because of documented community need, citizens' input. Water connections will take place in a well-defined geographic area that meets and surpass a key requirement to benefit a low-to-moderate-income community. The project will result in long-term quality-of-life improvements for Scottsdale residents, and it will provide a strong return on investment. Also attending this hearing is Chris Hilbert, representing Insight Planning and Development, and Gary McSpiff, Chief Engineer, Cape Fear Public Utilities. We are available for your feedback and questions. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have anything?
Theo, thanks so much for that, you know, wonderful and really clear explanation of a complicated, uh, project that has been in the works, as you pointed out, for three years or more, since it was first identified by CFPUA. Uh, one of the other issues that it helps resolve, and I think this is just the beginning of it for the general public to know, is extensions of water lines that also will help address the PFAS issues that in our contaminated aquifers. Uh, this will allow water to be, come through our Sweeney filtration plant, which will remove all PFAS and medications as well, pharmaceuticals. But, uh, so it's great news for that community, and there'll be more to come as we see more money coming in from the state and federal government. My main question to you is that we, even with the $3 million grant, we still fall about, by my calculation, $290,000 short. Where does that money come from, or have we figured that out yet?
Commissioners Apple, if we are awarded the grant, um, one of two options. We will come to the board and ask for the match, but, but I believe the timing will actually allow it to be part of the FY '26 budget. So, the board will have the opportunity to hear for, hear about the award, determine what the final need is, and would have two choices, in my opinion, of how to address that.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Theo. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Theo, thank you for your presentation. Uh, it's great to see that we're in a place where we can apply for a CDBG grant. Uh, I know we used to get funds for housing a while back, and I guess the city of Wilmington became the entitlement community, so the county no longer got those. But way back in the day, I think the county helped rebuild some homes in Reichsburg, and, and really helped a whole lot of folks out with housing-wise. But I'm glad to see there's grants there for infrastructure. Recognizing that we need to get a grant approved, I want to get people's hopes up. What happens if we don't get this grant approved? What's our next step in terms of addressing the problem there?
So, Commissioner Barfield, if, if I may, if the county's not successful in winning, I, I think the board would have to contemplate whether or not it wants to extend the full cost through general fund money, or find a way to partner with CFPUA in a cost share. But we wanted to explore the grant option first, believing that it would be competitive and that the state would look favorably upon it.
When we got money way back when for Heritage Park and, I mean, Markey Hills, was that grant money, low-interest loan money?
It was primarily through loan money from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. As I recall, it was on the order of 17 million, but that was largely through loan proceeds.
Yeah, I, I guess going down this road is not something that's unprecedented, as we have addressed other parts of our community in the past. Again, we borrowed money to help that particular area.
Yes, sir.
And they were experiencing wells, I mean, septic systems that were failing, that was contaminating, you know, our water supply, so to speak, when it comes to, I guess, some of the, the river area, as well as, I guess, the Castle Hain area as well. To me, this is, you know, I want to thank the folks that are here from Stevens Church Road area. You know, community input, you know, and citizen involvement is so important. As I see others here that will be here to speak at some of our public hearings, it's important that you express your concerns and, and, and issues to your elected officials, who are always here to listen, and always here to try to solve problems and to help individuals, uh, advance their communities, so to speak. But it takes people speaking up, you know, not once, not twice, but coming to meetings, sitting through meetings, and I've seen that you all have been, not these meetings, not just these meetings, but also at CFPUA meetings as well, advocating for your communities. And when you advocate, you know, things indeed happen. So, just want to commend all the folks that are here for all the public hearings, but in particular this one.
We, we certainly thank the manager's office for their guidance during this process. And as, uh, the commissioner indicated, citizen involvement during this process has been exemplary. We certainly thank the residents of the Scottsdale community for their input. It's been, uh, um, value-added to this initiative.
Anyone have anything else?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cynthia McIntyre? Hello?
Good evening. My name is Cynthia McIntyre. I live at 8951 Stevenson Church Road. Thank you for this opportunity, Commissioners. First, we want to thank you for the, uh, funds that you gave for the water pump that we have in Scottsdale where we could get clean water to drink and cook. We appreciate the funds that you already gave us. We have opened up that pump station for Monday, Wednesday, and Friday for the community. I also have some more of our community members here when you stand at this time. We also met with Cape Fear Public just, uh, last Tuesday to, uh, show our interest that we are ready to be hooked up to the water system. We are look forward for it. We've been praying and, uh, asking the Lord not to send a hurricane or stone, because without, uh, water, without lights, we don't have any water to flush the commode or shower. So, we are praying that God will show favor in the Scottsdale community and all over this world that we don't have a, a devil-laid stone. Also, we also have another member who would like to speak. We do appreciate what you're doing, and we look forward to having clean water to shower and cook and drink. And thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Bonnie Murray?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And of course, I was thinking, thank you, members. I was thinking that Cynthia was going to handle it this afternoon, but, uh, glad to have the opportunity to come before you again. And just piggyback on what she has said here, we are just so thankful that you had the heart and the mind to support the water station that we have there in our community now. It is making clean drinking water accessible to everyone in the community. It is making clean drinking water accessible to everyone in the community. So, in addition, we know the makeup of our area here in the Scottsdale Kirkland area. So this is another reason why we wanted to reinstate our need and to just be able to say to you that we do have low-income individuals there. We have citizens who are elderly. We have citizens there, residents there that are disabled. So even with the water pump there, you know, we have to have community members that are supportive enough to get them water from that water station. As you know, this has been a legitimate concern of our community for quite some time, and we have definitely witnessed your support here lately. And again, thank you so very, very much in helping us. Now we are asking that you will continue to help us in acquiring clean water and help providing the financial support of whatever resources we are going to need that may be challenging to us. I want you to know, too, that the residents of Scottsdale Kirkland area are willing to assist you in any way possible that we can to make clean water a reality for the Scottsdale community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just like to see that Mrs. Murray has done a lot already to assist her community. She's a retired educator. I've said this before, she was one of my teachers at Williston Junior High School just a couple of years ago.
Right.
And thank you for your service to our community.
Okay. Mr. Chair, do we need to take action on this?
Just one second.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, I need a motion to...
Move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any more discussion?
Move that we approve the second public hearing to be scheduled for August 19th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Second.
All in favors, aye.
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 All right, moving on. Request by, let me get it here, request by New Hanover County to amend the New Hanover County 2016 Comprehensive Plan to incorporate an appendix for residential densities and infill development policies. This is a public hearing. We will hear a presentation from staff, and the applicant and any opponent will each be allowed 15 minutes for the presentation and additional five minutes for rebuttal. Okay, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Chair, members of the board. I'll be presenting the Residential Density Draft Amendment, which aims to articulate existing policy recommendations around residential density. These address some of the considerations staff and the board have discussed when determining if a project is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Since the 2016 Comprehensive Plan was adopted, a number of rezoning requests have been submitted, and the commissioners have expressed a desire to have the plan updated. This will include considerations about how to balance the need for housing supply with concerns about the impact on infrastructure, the environment, and community character. To provide additional guidance while the comprehensive plan is being updated, staff has been asked to develop this amendment. It is intended to address concerns expressed over the last few years by citizens. The goal of this planned amendment is to provide a tool now that can be used for public hearings while the comprehensive plan is being updated over the next year and a half. This update will clarify density recommendations for place types based on existing nearby development and provide examples of appropriate transitions. The draft amendment was released for public comment in May. Since then, staff has received several comments from the public related to concerns about overdevelopment, higher density, multifamily adjacent to single-family development, building height, and lack of regulatory action. Staff has worked to incorporate those comments into the draft under consideration this evening. This includes more explanation about the reason for the project and its focus on providing clarity on existing policy. A chart of existing recommendations for density for each place type and an explanation about factors that affect density recommendations has been added. Specific examples are also provided that explain how to use these new recommendations. More context about transitional features for infill development has been provided along with recommendations and ordinance requirements. Components of the amendment include: a summary of the plan's recommendations for place-type density, a graphic explaining factors to consider when evaluating a project for density, a narrative detailing those factors and how the presence or lack thereof may call for a lower density within the said range, and a chart of sample transitional elements, including graphics and explanations of how and when those elements can be used. This includes information as to when elements are currently required by the county's UDO and when these are recommended. In accordance with the strategic plan, this proposal meets two focused outcomes: workforce and economic development that drives economic growth and opportunity, and sustainable land use and environmental stewardship that connects residents to basic needs through planned The plan outlines a recommended range of densities for each place type. Staff's analysis and recommendations are based on the current plan recommendations. This means that if the density of a project is within the range of a place type, staff finds a request generally consistent and with the current, and consistent with the current plan, excuse me. However, as has been noted in the past, the entire range of densities in a place type may not always be suitable for every project, but there's not a tool to guide where a project should fall within the given density range. There are several factors that can impact when certain densities are more appropriate, like water and sewer access, sensitive environmental features, nearby open space and commercial centers, and affordability. These factors are what members of the community have expressed are most important and what the commissioners and planning boards should consider during rezoning requests. While staff discusses those factors with customers before they apply, and they are included in the staff report analysis, they cannot be included in staff's recommendation of consistency because they are not directly addressed in the comprehensive plan. When evaluating a rezoning, staff takes into consideration the density of the project, recommendations of the place type, and its relation to the surrounding density. The purpose of place types in the plan is to acknowledge that what may be appropriate in one area of the county may not always be appropriate in another. This can be true even for developments within the same place type. Often newer projects are requesting higher density, but due to the county's historic development patterns, that is often near or adjacent to existing lower-density neighborhoods. This amendment is intended to establish a scale to help evaluate when higher or lower density is more appropriate. This includes those factors we mentioned before, such as proximity to major corridors or intersections, public transit, open space, environmental features, or affordability. Areas shown in yellow on the future land use map are the general residential place type, which you can see encompasses a great deal of land in the county, so I'll use this as an example. This place type recommends a density range of up to eight dwelling units per acre. Under the county's current plan, if there was a rezoning for 10 acres, anything between eight units and 80 units would be considered generally consistent with the comprehensive plan's recommendations. However, with this amendment, the board and staff would consider the maximum of 80 units more appropriate if the project is along a major road with nearby community-level services and parks. A lower density may be more appropriate the further a project is from those guidelines, all within the same general residential place type. Even after finding appropriate scales of density, there will still be a need for physical transitions. This amendment also provides recommendations for appropriate transitional elements between land uses and densities. The transitional elements are found in the layout and design features of a project and include considerations around land uses and building height, connectivity, stormwater, green infrastructure, roadways and private drives, and landscaping, accessory elements, and hard barriers. What we have encouraged applicants to do over the past few years is to locate higher-intensity uses closer to existing higher-intensity areas, and locate lower-intensity uses closer to existing lower-density and lower-intensity of development. The same goes for building height. It's recommended that any proposed taller structures be located further away from existing shorter structures and nearer roadway corridors. Minimum standards for these elements exist in the county's UDO. However, when an infill project comes in, staff looks for additional transitional elements. These are things staff already recommends, as they are the items that come up frequently in public meetings. We want this to be helpful for the applicants as well. Additional multimodal connectivity is encouraged where possible. An example would be an added connection to an adjacent park or a trail to the park. Again, there are minimal UDO requirements for these features, and this amendment recommends considering additional transitional elements, which are a frequent topic in rezoning requests. These features can assist in providing a pedestrian-oriented scale on roadways and between buildings. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Anybody have questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Amy, thanks for that presentation. What I feel we're dancing around is infill, and I know that you've kind of warmed up to it, and you're nipping around the edges of it and how to deal with it. The problems come when we have an infill project that is surrounded by R-15 and R-20 existing projects, homeowners, sometimes, you know, 20, 30 years old or more. Encouragement is not enough to deal with that, and again, I know this is a work in progress. I can only encourage you, and I know that I read through the comments that you received, and there was a lot of comments going at exactly what I was, what I'm just referring to. Where we have, you know, more land that's open at this point, and development that hasn't happened yet, especially in the northern part of the county, and we just heard about the projects that are coming forward with water and sewers as we open up. Yeah, you've done a beautiful job in outlining how we can manage that as it gets built. The problem that we keep running into is infill and how we deal with that. So it's just a general thought, I, I'll stop there. I'm sure my other commissioners have comments as well.
I guess I'm trying, Mr. Chairman, may I speak? I'm trying to understand, in simplistic, practical terms, what changes if we vote to approve this? What stays the same if we elect not to? As short and sweet as you can make that.
There is, there are no new regulations being introduced here. It is a summary of what's existing and what's been, it's basically taking what's existing in different pieces and what's been encouraged, and it's reiterating that into this document, which can just kind of summarize it to help influence and help, to help applicants on the front end, one, to see what issues have been coming up and how those are typically addressed, what community concerns have been, and how those are typically addressed through the public hearings, and also what planning board and board commissioners, your board have been expressing. There is, there is nothing new there. It's just basically summarizing what we have in the ordinance and the UDO and in the comprehensive plan regarding these, this type of development.
I guess that's where I'm tripping up a little bit. If there's nothing new, we're just kind of summarizing, why do we need this?
So this was requested because of a lot of the items that y'all have been seeing in terms of rezonings for these infill types of projects. Basically, at this point in time, an applicant will come to us. We have a conversation during a pre-application conference generally, although that is something that is left up to the applicant, so sometimes we don't see projects until an application comes in. At that point in time, staff's recommendation is based on what is in our comprehensive plan. Currently, our comprehensive plan does not have any of this specific language. We have discussed over the past eight years or so how we've interpreted the plan's recommendations, but as Amy mentioned, generally, anything within that broad range of density is generally consistent. So from a staff standpoint, it would be consistent with the plan, and that would be the recommendation that we would provide to you is one of approval. Right now, if a project is designed and there are taller structures right next to an existing project, then that is generally consistent with the plan. And so, again, as staff, that would be the recommendation, is approve this, this is generally consistent with what you say that you want. And so by incorporating this into our comprehensive plan, we were able to work with applicants prior to application, because a lot of them want to know what you want. And as staff, we can provide them some guiding language, but until we have something clearly articulated in the guiding policy document for the county, it's up to interpretation to some extent. And they can come forward, and they can argue when they think a project is something that meets the standards of what y'all would be looking for. And as staff, we don't really have a lot of guidance that we can provide at that point in time. It also means that the community, when they are coming forward, they have, for the past eight years, said that some of these features are important for them to make sure that new projects are in keeping with the character of their community, but they don't have anything in order to kind of base that on as well. So it's even a piece where members of the community can use to make sure that the projects are ones that they can speak to, that they can articulate, hey, this is what you said that you wanted, this is what the application is providing. So as Amy mentioned, it's not new information, it's stuff that we've been discussing for eight years, but it's articulated clearly in the guiding policy document of the county so that we can use it more effectively during the rezoning conversations that we have, so that applicants are moving projects forward that are more in keeping with what you want to see, that staff is better able to provide guidance, and members of the community are better able to speak as to when projects may not be meeting this intent.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Rebecca, let me push back slightly on that. The frustration of the public comes when they look at this, and even with these enhanced guidelines, I guess, here, when they see words like "encouraged," they know that that means very little in the way of trying to get or advocate for what they want for their community, especially when they see a high-density project moving into the middle of their established neighborhood. So I, you know, I fall down partially on Commissioner Scalise's point of view. I don't know that this does a whole lot forward, moving it forward. I also recognize that you're clearly saying this is a work in progress as we get to the full comprehensive, 2016 comprehensive redo or revision. But I sure wish that there was more language that the public especially could look to, to understand why it is that we allow, or why they pick up their packet that they get from our planning department and say, you know, we're going to put in this high-density right next door to me. And you are stuck saying, well, because it kind of meets, kind of meets, or is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and thus you're kind of hemmed in. I wish there was a way to make a harder line there. I think that the public would appreciate that. I would, too.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Zappel, if I may, your point is spot-on, but at this point, the way the plan is written is if it's anywhere in general and residential, as Amy suggested, anything from zero to eight units per acre. It ultimately comes down to the board in terms of a value judgment of where eight acres is appropriate versus six, I'm sorry, eight units per acre versus six versus four. This begins to set up in the discussion, staff with an applicant, and whether or not the applicant will listen is incumbent upon the applicant and ultimately for the board. But to say, based on the site that you're examining, yes, the comprehensive plan says eight units per acre are here, but because of these external factors around you, staff would find it more comfortable, more likely to recommend four units an acre or six units an acre, even though the comprehensive plan says eight is reasonable based on... an acre, even though the comprehensive plan says eight is reasonable based on the comprehensive plan. And so unless the board is willing to define in text specifically where four units, six units, or eight units is most appropriate, I do believe this is the best tool to begin to set up because these are largely going to be conditional rezonings where negotiation between the applicant and the county commission is reasonable and acceptable. We have heard you express, not you individually, but the board as a body, say, you're asking for the maximum. We wish you wouldn't, but they can ask and on what basis would staff say it should be some number less? We, we don't have that clarity from the board yet. This is setting up the discussion for that where it does allow staff to lead, in my opinion, with suggesting the commission is not going to accept eight units an acre when you are next to a subdivision that has 15 homes in it and you want to put 80 multifamily units next to it. And so that is the point that we're trying to get to. And until the board updates the comprehensive plan, has new tools in the book, so to speak, you're going to face that conflict where applicants, because they can, may continue to ask for the maximum number of units as defined by the place types. So that, that is why we've made this recommendation to you to, to give the staff more opportunity to define this location. Yes, it's a general place type of general residential or whatever it is, but the maximum number of units for the reasons around it is not likely the best path to follow. The board may agree or disagree with that. The, the applicant, him or herself, may agree to the conditions or not, but it begins to put more of a negotiation, and the lawyers may not like me saying that, but it gives the staff and the board more opportunity to negotiate to the outcomes that you believe are reasonable, that are something less than the maximum number of units per acre in any space. So this, I believe, is the best the staff can do for you until the board defines exactly how many units per acre are appropriate next to an existing subdivision that is R-15 versus R-20.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I guess what I'm hearing you all saying is that you all are really trying to get some type of predictability from our board. Am I correct?
I think that us being on the same page would be helpful. It's helpful to be able to tell people earlier in the conversation so that they're not moving through with a project that y'all don't want to see. And so this is an attempt to know what it is that y'all are really looking for in some of these projects because over the past eight years, there have been projects with higher densities that have been approved, there have been projects that have been too dense. Projects may be dense, but they may not be designed in a way where it transitions naturally to the adjacent properties. And so we are having these conversations and I think there's been frustration on y'all's part because you're not necessarily seeing the projects designed in the way that you want to see them. So this is an additional tool to help articulate what it is that y'all want to see.
I guess my thought is that for the foreseeable, foreseeable future, you probably have unpredictable predictability. And it seems like every two years there's a sea change and when that sea change happens, that unpredictability starts to happen as well in terms of stability, instability with different thoughts about development and, and the like. You know, when you look at building more density into an infill area, to me, it's very similar to a planned unit development where you have the same types of housing types in those communities, Riverlights, you've got townhomes, you've got single-family homes, you've got bigger homes, smaller homes, all in that same area. And to me, with limited land, it's, it's important that we continue to be flexible and look at all types of housing. At the same time, I don't want to be too predictable to where we're putting a muzzle on folks that are trying to earn a living because if you start saying, well, you can only do five units per acre, you know, it's not going to be affordable for a developer to go in and do that and then you're going to have a complete housing stop in our community, which I don't think that, that's what we want to do as well because as we know, we're 20 some thousand units behind between rentals and, 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 and single-family homes, so to speak. To me, there's a fine line in, in, in having that predictability. Again, I know that costs are going up for developers, land costs are going up, costs to get water and sewers going up, and someone's got to pay for that and the way you get that done, the stew density. And so again, when as a board we start putting a muzzle on that, we're basically saying, we don't want you to build in this community. And we know that there's an explosion taking place in Brunswick County by leaps and bounds. We have a better community, I believe, here in New Haven County, but there's an explosion there because it's, it's easier to do business with. And I, I would like for our county to be as easy as possible to, to do business with without hurting communities and neighborhoods. You know, with some of the things we voted on, the Walmart up in Porter's Neck, you know, folks were up in arms about having a Walmart in the area. We don't want it, we don't want it. It's one of the busiest Walmarts in our community. My wife drives from where we are at Monkey Junction, we have a Walmart by us, but she prefers to go to that Walmart as opposed to the one that's close to us. And other things, another amenities that come as the growth takes place. And I think one of our goals is to build areas where, where if you have a certain number of residences, then you're going to have more commercial development take place. And, and, and those, those hubs, so to speak, will, I guess, serve those communities in a greater capacity. You know, I often speak about where I live, to me, I'm centrally located, but I can walk to three different grocery stores from my home. And those are the kind of things that I think that people are looking for, that close proximity to commercial services, but you've got to have the density in those areas to make that happen. Just like downtown Wilmington, we're trying to get a grocery store downtown, but until enough rooftops downtown, a major grocery store is not going to come in that area because it's not going to be profitable for them. So again, I don't know that, how predictable we can be because I, I want to continue to look at stuff on a case-by-case basis and see if it makes sense. But seeing some of the growth here, and I've been going into new communities, working with clients, buying properties, it amazes that what we see as a concept on a sheet of paper and then see the actual built product and how we're serving our community, you know, to me is great. I was trying to get the county to buy Eco Farms at one point in time. I'm glad we, I wish we did, but I'm glad we didn't. When you look at all the different neighborhoods that are in that area now and with those homes, now you have this Harris Teeter at the corner of Independence and Conover Road and all these other shops that have popped up and other things that are coming there because we've built these nodes, so to speak, that's allowing growth to take place. Now within the city of Wilmington, but those nodes are, I think, what keeps traffic off the road, so to speak. So I'm just not sure how predictable I will ever be when it comes to voting on these things.
Yeah, I will say that's one of the reasons why the language in the policy is more on the encouraged side because as the board, we want to make sure that y'all are able to make the judgment calls that you find most appropriate so we can articulate what it is that you're hoping to see, but leaving it up to you to make that final decision.
I'll just add that, you know, to me, one thing spurs another. And for me, the residential piece spurs commercial development, which provides services. And people are always looking for services. And it's great when you don't have to drive, you know, 10 to 15 miles to go to see the doctor. I'm with Wilmington Health, but I can go right to Monkey Junction as opposed to going to Parker Farms at Mayfair to get the services that I need and that's a benefit for me as a citizen because I'm saving my time, I'm saving my money with gas and less vehicles on the road as well. So again, the more we can do to create those nodes, but you got to have the residential piece first. It's like the chicken and the egg, you got to have the rooftops before the commercial piece is going to come to service people. And I hope people understand that because I'm sure that we all benefit from having a grocery store close to us or in some cases, folks in Castle Hanged that may have this one grocery store or food line and that's it. You've got to drive for miles to get somewhere, it can be a challenge.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just a comment. I see what you're, what you are aiming for and I appreciate that, but it, it concerns me that we would put a document together that might imply to an applicant that if you present your project this way, you will likely get it approved by the commission. I'm not, that's not what you're saying, but that would be the implied, I think a lot of developers might feel that that's what you're implying. But my concern there is if they go by the document and then we don't approve it, then they're still upset because they thought they did what they were told to do by the planning board. I think, I agree with Commissioner Barfield, oops, sorry, lost it, that it should be a case-by-case. It's very, well, we look tonight, there's eight public hearings on our agenda, so we do have quite a few things coming before us. But I'm concerned that if we put something like that out there, we're implying that you're likely to get this passed if you do it this way. And as we know, everything on this board changes with depending on what's going on in our community and who's on this board, we continue to change our thoughts and, and what we feel about development. So I get what you're trying to do, it's got to be frustrating for you as staff as well, but I, I'm not sure it's the right thing for us to do.
I have some things that I might offer, but I think they're probably more appropriate for board discussion than questions posed to staff.
And I'll just try me one more time and I hear Vice Chair Pierce, the reality is, the document we have now says if you do X, you're going to get X. And people aren't getting X. And it's almost like going to McDonald's and asking for a Big Mac and they tell you, well, you can't have a Big Mac today. And you're like, well, it's on your menu, it's not on the menu, you don't have it, take it off the menu. And you expect to get what you say you can have. And, and I think that's where the predictability is coming in from the development community because we're saying you can do X, but many times we're saying, we don't want you to do X, although we told you you can do X. And it can be a bit confusing, it can probably be a bit challenging and a bit frustrating as well when you're thinking that you qualify for this because you're told you can get this, but then other folks say, well, we don't want you to have what we told you can have. And I'll be a little upset too.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Great, thanks. Rebecca, I think you really nailed it and Amy as well. By the way, I didn't say before, that was an excellent presentation. We're in a transitional period, but as I think Commissioner Barfield mentioned, you know, it seems that the transition seem to be happening more and more frequently, every two years seems to be. But what we're clearly hearing from the public is that what we are currently doing is going sideways with the public as we hear more and more upsetness, again, from those who came to our area, bought with the reasonable assumption that the land around them would remain what it is zoned. Now, I, I recognize that, you know, because of the pressures of us to have more people here and be able to provide more, that's where the density conversation comes in. But we need to be able to have some ability to say, you know, enough here. I think that's where, at least in my mind, where the concepts, and you've been great about this Rebecca, is incorporating mixed use in there so that we can provide those services along with residential units as well so we can keep people off the road, having them get their services delivered right there near them. I think that is a wonderful tool to, to help, but that only goes so far. And I'm going to flip the conversation slightly is that developers or builders can always appeal to the commission. In other words, if you suggest or you encourage or even you had something on the books that said this number of units and they want to do more, they can always make an appeal to, to the commission. Right now, I feel as though that both the general public and the developers are at odds because there is no clear formula, there's no, they don't understand what, what to expect, you know, going in with development. Those are my comments.
Well, no, I'm not going to say that. Anybody got anything else?
Are there any public comments?
Yes, one. Thank you. Logan Second? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Commission. My name is Logan Seacord. I live at 2900 Newtown Drive up in the North Chase area. I'm here to speak in support of these guidelines. So a little bit of background, you know, I've reviewed the comprehensive plan that New Hanover County has alongside the comprehensive plan for the city of Wilmington. And, you know, you guys have highlighted a main concern, which is there is a lack of clarity and a lack of specificity. If you boil down and take out all the formatting from the comprehensive plan and some of the guidelines, two pages, that's, that's nothing. And so that level of ambiguity is where a lot of these issues are coming from. But I would say that this document solves that. There are going to be developments, one which is, you know, say in the middle of nowhere and one which is right in the middle of a neighborhood, and they're both zoned the same way. And this document helps you say, all right, which of you is better? The one with the proximity to public transport, the one with better affordability options, the one with water and sewer there, or the other? Growth is happening. Personally, I'd love to just shut the door. I like Wilmington. Five years ago, it was much smaller, there was a lot more green space. But I don't know that we can shut the door. And so we can either grow intelligently or we can be Charlotte and Atlanta. We've all seen the amount of traffic coming on our roads, we've all seen the growth happening outward, and that's exactly what we don't want. The solution to that is, number one, mixed use. We can't have people driving miles down the road to the Harris Teeter, we have to have mixed use infill development. To be candid, nobody's going to want the development next to them. And that is every individual's right to say, you know, I really don't want this here and since we are democratic process, they are here to do that. But what this commission is called to do is to say, this community as a whole, this county as a whole, what is going to be in the best interest of it? And we cannot continue to grow out due to our constraints geographically, we must develop intelligently. So I would speak in support of this. There are two things that I would highlight that I would like to see a little bit more of, a little bit more teeth to, to Commissioners Apples. That is around the affordability and the other is around some of the stormwater. On the affordability, it talks on page three, you know, up to 120% of AMI, minimum of 20%. You know, I've been reviewing a lot of zoning applications, you're going to see me here and the city planning board as well. And there are some that come in and they say, well, I, I did the requirement, it's 10% of my housing is at 80% AMI. Okay, so 90% of your housing is above the 80th percentile. That means that 90% of your housing is above and beyond what's about $80,000 here. That means no teacher, no paramedic, no firefighter, none of them are going to be able to afford it. We have tens of thousands of individuals who work here and contribute here but cannot live here. And the only way we solve that is increasing supply, supply and demand. The demand is here. And the only way to counter increase in prices is going to be increase in supply with some teeth. You'll hear me anytime I see a development, I'm going to be coming up and saying, what are you doing for affordability? And if I see numbers like that, I'm going to be against it because it's not actually helping the problem. Continuing on to page five and six, I'm sorry, page seven, stormwater. We have the guidelines and the regulations in place around not building in floodplains. But the problem is, is that those floodplain maps are the floodplains of yesterday. It's funny how many once-in-a-hundred-year storms seem to be in the news these days. The next Hurricane Florence is coming. And unlike 2018, we got a lot more impervious surface that can't handle it and we've got a lot less trees to absorb it. So we need to be intelligent, we need to have guidelines, and I'm going to be working in, as a citizen, to support modifications. That means more pervious pavements for developers, more advanced stormwater designs. We can't just have your stormwater drains from whole new apartment complexes going out into our aquifers and contributing to the degradation of the environment, which is what so many people, myself included, have come here for. There are smart ways to do that. I actually met with UNCW's manager of sustainability, they are brilliant. They haven't repaved whole parking lots, they've just repaved 10 to 25% and have completely eliminated flooding since I was there on campus and I graduated about 2017. They have done things like stormwater gardens and addressed a lot of the concerns. You would think that's not going to do it, but they have solved many of their stormwater problems that I remember walking barefoot across campus because of ankle-deep water with smart development guidelines like these green and stormwater features. So I think that is brilliant. I think, to Commissioner Zappel's point, like, the work is not done, we need teeth. Zapples' point, like, the work is not done. We need teeth. We need work to be done. And I, for one, am going to be very involved as a citizen, trying to develop those ordinances in order to do that. But I would say that this is a step in the right direction to say, "Developers, this is what we would like to see." Otherwise, y'all and Cindy are going to get really annoyed with the same five comments I bring every month, because I'm going to be commenting on all of these zonings, and there's going to be many of them. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just want to say our last speaker was brilliant.
Mr. Chair, if it's appropriate to make a comment, to our last speaker, this county, since Hurricane Florence, in those areas where we had some of the worst flooding, has invested literally millions of dollars and countless hours. One of our chief engineer, Tim Lowe, is here. He could speak to the dozens of projects we've done, especially up in the Torchwood area, to try to make an impact. And as much as I don't want to see a large rain event, I'll be very curious, and you're going to have a lot of eyes and ears on it. We've made a lot of improvements. We learned a tremendous amount. It has not fallen on deaf ears, and I hope we will see a much better outcome the next time we have a large rain event. You'll note that I'm not using the H-word. Okay? But thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there any more discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just remain concerned that we may be putting the cart before the horse a little bit here. We have an ongoing plan to revise our comprehensive plan, and this seems a bit patchwork to me. And I understand the desire to want to create a clear mathematical formula, but there just isn't going to be a clear mathematical formula whenever it comes to items like this. These issues are obviously always going to be emotional, and they should be. And there isn't a one-size-fits-all approach. I don't want to ever actually give that impression that there's a one-size-fits-all approach. I think it's been said several times by other commissioners up here. There are just some projects that we shouldn't approve. And I am concerned that perhaps this language, this well-intentioned amendment may give, as Commissioner, as, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Pierce indicated, the impression that we intend for certain things to happen and set an expectation for them to happen when, in fact, we don't want that. So, I don't know what is exactly the right thing here, but I'm not sure that this is a well-timed amendment.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
There's a portion of my brain that agrees with Commissioner Scalise. And yes, it's an imperfect path forward. But because this is a constantly evolving issue, and one that we've been discussing as long as I've been a commissioner, this is the kind of, you know, hard, messy work that we need to do. And I tell you one thing out of this, I support Rebecca and her team.
Me, too.
And if she comes to me and says, "This is what we need to do to get to that next step forward," my God, I'm picking up the banner and I'm going to run with it, knowing full well that everything you just said is also there, too. And Rebecca hears it, and so does Amy. So, I support this.
Yeah, just to be clear, of course, I support Rebecca and staff. I am very grateful for this work. I think that one of our responsibilities is to put thoughts like that into the universe, to make sure that we are considering all sides, all factors, before we make a vote on something like that. As you can probably hear in my uncertainty, I'm not entirely sure what the right thing is here, but I do know that it was a well-intentioned effort by staff.
One thing that bothers me is, you know, if somebody wants to build a million apartments somewhere where they got all the land in the world out in the country somewhere, I'm all for it, but not in a little pocket in between two neighborhoods. And it may not be that. It might be traffic. You know, there's so many things you'd have to put in that where, you know, when they come apply, you've got to sit down with them and talk to them and say, "No." And you don't know what we're going to do. You get an idea, but you're not ever going to know exactly what we're going to do, not on every project.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't really think this is about Rebecca. I think it's about, I know that her staff probably gets frustrated with this board because of our unpredictability. And I can, again, as I mentioned before, looking at it from a developer's standpoint, can be frustrating as well when, again, your plan says you qualify for X, but you got folks saying, "We don't want to give you X." But you qualify for it. And I don't know that that's going to change. It's almost like when we had the joint meeting with the planning board, it was, again, a chance to try to get us all on the same page, so to speak. And that hasn't happened either, because each case is different, and each thing is different. The thing that I know we can't do is make blanket statements. I know we're not going to approve a project with traffic on Market Street. We heard a commissioner say that before and kind of got sued for a project and we lost. You can't make blanket statements like that, but you can take things case by case. So, again, I understand where Commissioner Scalise is coming from, and I agree that, I just don't know that this is going to solve your problem and your staff's problem, as you're caught between us and developers trying to figure out, you know, what can we bring forward. You know, I had an agent call me the other day who wanted to make an offer on the property, and she's trying to figure out if my client would accept. I said, "Well, I know they'll accept asking price to bring me an offer." And I would tell the developers, "You've got to bring what you've got to bring, and you'll know that evening whether or not what you've brought will pass muster with the board based on what's presented." But I don't want to say that, again, one-size-fits-all and X is going to be approved based on whatever. But I will say that what the comprehensive plan says you can get, I'm going to be in support of.
I think if you just sat down and wrote up a page of rules of what a developer could do, you wouldn't need us, maybe one of us. Anyway, anybody else? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Does anybody have a motion for approval?
Mr. Chair, motion to approve.
Your second?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a substitute motion to deny approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes four to one. Okay. Zoning request, Z24-08, request by Cindy Wolf with Design Solutions. Applicant on behalf of Giovanni Apolito and Tania Villa Conces. Property enters to rezone approximately 4.65 acres of land located at 6634 Carolina Beach Road from R15, residential to CZDRMFM residential multifamily, moderate density for a maximum of 72 units, multifamily development. This is a public hearing. We will hear a presentation from staff. Then the applicant and any opponents will each be allowed 15 minutes for their presentation and an additional five minutes for rebuttal. I know that there are several people that are in opposition that have signed up for this, but the 15 minutes is between everybody together. So, if one person gets in and speaks for 12, probably going to get the two people. But then you get five minutes of rebuttal at the end. Yes, sir?
Mr. Chair, before we get started, can we confirm that the timer is working?
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, sir.
And just as a general point for the remainder of the public hearing items that are rezonings, at the Board's agenda review last week, there was a request to see if someone from DOT could be present at the meeting this evening. We reached out to DOT and was informed that they would not be able to have anyone available at the meeting this evening. But Scott James of the WMPO is here and has briefed and has reviewed the DOT's preliminary comments on the agenda items this evening. So, this rezoning request this evening is to rezone approximately 4.56 acres from the R15 residential district to the RMFM residential multifamily, moderate-density district. This project will look familiar to the Board. This project was originally presented in May of last year. So, just to go over some of those items that we discussed last year. As a reminder, the site is located at 6634 Carolina Beach Road and was originally zoned R15 in the 1970s. At the time, the purpose of the district was to ensure housing densities remained lower due to the need for private wells and septic systems. Since then, public water and sewer have become available in the area. From the aerial photography, we can see the site is bordered by single-family residential on three sides with a religious institution immediately to the north. Here's an aerial photo of the site with images of the property from different angles. Here are examples of development you might see in the R15 district, and here are examples of multifamily development. Concept plan proposes a 64-unit multifamily development consisting of four three-story, 12-unit multifamily buildings, and two two-story, eight-unit buildings on the western side of the site bordering neighboring residential. Concept plan also includes an amenity center, recreation area, and open space along with stormwater, the voluntary addition of a right-turn lane off Carolina Beach Road, and a privacy fence on the northern, eastern, and southern boundaries of the site. A condition has been included guaranteeing fencing. This area has one subdivision and three TIAs within a mile of the site. The site has direct access to Carolina Beach Road, a DOT-maintained urban principal arterial highway. Access is, I'm sorry, just to the south, you can see Glen Arthur Drive. Access is right in, right out, with an existing U-turn movement approximately 1,800 feet to the south at Cypress Village Place. And again, the developers are proposing an additional right-turn lane voluntarily. Sorry. The proposed development would generate under 50 AM and PM peak-hour trips, which is below the threshold for traffic impact analysis. Project is located along a major arterial highway that is currently nearing capacity. Currently, there are no state transportation improvement or STIP projects in the immediate area to address current conditions. Several other projects are under review in the general area, and while their TIAs did not include this specific project, all were developed to address general traffic growth in the area. Based on the current general student generation rate, potential increase would result in approximately 10 additional students that would be generated under current zoning. This generation rate is updated on an annual basis using actual student numbers provided by the school system, and provides a county-wide picture of the number of students each new residential unit is likely to yield, taking into account that most new residential units in the county do not provide homes for large numbers of school-aged children. Project addresses two areas of the strategic plan related to housing and preserving natural areas. Due to the size of the property and access on the Carolina Beach Road, this property is less likely to be developed with lower-density detached single-family housing. At 14 dwelling units per acre, the proposed maximum density is within the density recommendation for the place type. Site features such as landscaping, parking, and stormwater at the boundaries of the project provide buffers between the residential uses. And the applicant has also provided an additional condition of 10% or six total units be dedicated for workforce housing for a minimum of 15 years. Comprehensive plan designates this property as community mixed-use, which is intended to promote a mix of retail, office, and residential development at moderate densities up to 15 units per acre and a dwelling height or a building height range of one to three stories. The RMFM district is intended to act as a transitional district between residential and commercial development. Proposed project would provide a buffer between the highway and the neighboring single-family development. Planning board considered this application at their June 6 meeting. Several members of the public spoke in opposition citing concerns about increased traffic and the density of the project. The planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval with an additional condition proposed by the planning board and agreed to by the applicant, limiting the dumpster location to the northern or eastern portion of the site away from the neighboring single-family development. Planning board found the application to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan, because the development scale is in line with the plan's recommendation for the place type, and the project would provide additional housing diversity in the area. Planning board also found recommending approval of the rezoning request was reasonable and in the public interest, because it provided an alternative housing type to act as a buffer from that lower-density residential, contributing to the kind of transitional development desired along highway corridors. An additional voluntary condition, again, by the applicant, has ensured workforce housing for 10% of the units or six total units for a period of 15 years. Based on the policy guidance of the 2016 comprehensive plan, zoning considerations, technical review, and the recommended uses and residential density for the community mixed-use place type, staff concurs with the planning board recommendation with the following conditions related to exterior lighting, the addition of a right-turn lane, tree protection, fencing, and the additional voluntary condition by the applicant for workforce housing affordability for 10% or six total units for a period of 15 years, and restrictions on the number of units and height of the westernmost structures. Staff has received several additional comments regarding this application, which were provided to you earlier today. Finally, should the rezoning be approved, development and site would be subject to additional development review through the county's technical review committee to ensure all land use regulations are met. This concludes my presentation. Scott James of the WMPO and Tim Lowe with County Engineering are here, and the applicant has prepared a presentation. You can answer any questions.
You don't have any questions for Robert? Thank you. Ms. Cool.
Good evening. My name's Cindy Wolf. I'm here on behalf of the owners of the property. We have worked through the ordinance process, as provided, because we continue to strongly believe that there is, and as staff has recommended in their case summary, and planning board unanimously recommended after their hearing, support, consistency, and justification for approval of this conditional zoning district. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan is our chart-the-course. It's a guiding document for fostering economic development and sustainable stewardship of the county. The policies for growth and development encourage safe and affordable housing to be available to every citizen, but that needs to include diversity of the housing types. Housing preferences are not solely the single-family lot template that has dominated the suburbs in the past. This tract was designated within a place type that promotes higher-density development for a reason. Properties along busier road corridors in our county are no longer attractive or even appropriate for lower-density single-family development. Rezoning of this property for multifamily residential development would be consistent with the concept of not only transitioning use, but providing in vacant parcels where existing utilities can readily be extended and urban services are available. We continue to hear about the influx of new residents in our county and the deficit of housing opportunities. The lack of supply and demand continues to drive the rental costs up. Multifamily rental housing can be a temporary solution to evolve into home buying, but in some cases, it's simply a housing preference for versatility. A mix of housing types also helps create a broader range of residents to support a vibrant community. These charts in the needs assessment show that the southern portion of our county is lopsided with both an older demographic and a lower renter's share of housing opportunity. The plan proposes a total of 64 units. I think there was an error in the introduction of 72. This is a total of 64 units oriented around a common area of existing trees with a recreational amenity. An offered condition for approval is that at least six of those units will be dedicated for workforce housing standards. You can see from the aerial that the footprint of these buildings is roughly only double the size of a common Lord's Creek home. We've addressed massing. The two rear buildings closest to those residences are only two-story to provide transition in height. There is no parking along that side of the drive aisle adjacent to the rear boundary. Complexes of this size have onsite management during daily hours and then 24/7 contact otherwise. The amenity building will have a small office for a manager, facilities for pool users, and common space for residents. As far as the architectural style, the owner continues his desire for a Mediterranean design. This is a cross-section to the nearest adjacent residences. I guarantee that some of the trees within this buffer are well over the 30-foot height that I've shown, and yet the view line is still blocked. By reducing those rear buildings to two-story, the maximum height is only 26 feet. Any other residential structure in the county can by right have a maximum of 40 feet. Any other residential structure in the county can by right have a maximum of forty feet. The rear setback prescribed by the ordinance is just thirty feet, but this design provides a minimum of seventy-three feet to those adjacent property lines. We internalized the building and encircled the parking intentionally to provide excess setback. Again, the parking is single-loaded so that along the boundary, there aren't cars on that side of the road. The tree symbols shown are the actual regulated trees identified in the field survey. Rather than place a solid screening fence along the common property line, we would commit to installing protection fencing along the fifteen-foot offset prior to onset of clearing and grading with no disturbance of existing vegetation within that area permitted. Then at the completion of construction, an eight-foot-high solid screening fence would be installed along the pavement edge, again, preserving that existing vegetation. Access to the complex is directly to and from Carolina Beach Road. This is not an infill project. This is a project long a major thoroughfare. The trip generation between the different housing products shows that the increase during peak hours is negligible when compared to the volume of traffic on this roadway. Granted, we all know added traffic in our area becomes a running total as new projects are constantly proposed, but that being said, there's many factors in the cumulative effect of traffic during the whole twenty-four-hour day. Carolina Beach Road is a major thoroughfare. It's where the traffic is intended to be. There's a good chance that people who would occupy these apartments are already folks on Carolina Beach Roads, such as those that may have jobs down on Preur Island. One thing I totally agree with the opposition is that the speed limit along this stretch should be reduced to forty-five miles an hour. With all the development that has gone on between Sanders Road and Myrtle Grove Road, the fifty-five mile-per-hour limit is absolutely not appropriate. That's a request from the county to NC DOT, not something we can control. But regardless, each and every one of us needs to be responsible for our own driving habits. There's currently a deceleration taper in right turn lane into Glen Arthur Drive. Preliminary review of this project by DOT has yielded the requirement that we would need to extend that turn lane and the taper accordingly. Scott James explained to the planning board members that having multiple driveway intersections to a turn lane is in no way unusual along a thoroughfare road. The vehicle entering the highway is the stand-on and is responsible for waiting for adequate space to access. The lengths of the taper and the full length are dictated by NC DOT during their review of driveway permitting. These improvements would be entirely within the existing public right-of-way and not adversely impact the adjacent church in any way. Drainage and stormwater management are very straightforward for this project. We've set aside more than adequate area for the detention pond. We have excellent grade across the site to get that runoff to the pond, and it is obviously located on the low side of the track. The existing stream that carries the drainage will continue to traverse off-site, excuse me, flow past the site and provides for mandatory pond overflow. We've provided the fifty-foot storm buffer. The wetlands along the stream bordering it have been delineated and approved by the Corps of Engineers. There are no impacts to the wetlands proposed, and the swamp forest resource will be buffered as required by the county ordinance. We are well upstream of the closest hundreds-year flood limit. In conclusion, every new home in our community is built in somebody's backyard. New Hanover County is certainly not a stagnant community. This property was zoned for low density back in nineteen seventy-one when zoning was adopted. Conditions change. We don't need sewer, septic systems and wells, but that's why we update our future plans on a regular basis. The compelling reason for any zoning change is its consistency with both the plans and policies developed by the county for the county as a whole. Conditional zoning districts allow for each project, as we've talked just in the past half hour, to be weighed on its merits and whether mitigation is provided for potential impacts. This project has merits and does provide the mitigation. This type of development is an acceptable transition along a busy highway. This project has addressed massing. This project has provided additional setback and buffering provisions. There has been a height transition provided. The project addresses affordable housing strategies, and public road improvements will provide safe vehicular access. The county's ultimate purpose and goal is for intelligent growth and positive economic development. If we postpone the types of actions and investments, courage is needed to address our housing crisis. We're not just undermining the well-being of the whole community, but we're undermining our long-term economic viability and workforce development. We cannot squander opportunities to meet the strategies and policies we've endorsed by our land use plan. We appreciate the staff's thorough review, their recommendation. We certainly appreciate the planning board's thoughtfulness in their recommendation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Nancy Steele?
How do I cue up my slides?
Pull that mic down towards you a little bit.
My name is Nancy Steele, and I live at eight sixteen-
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Are we at the point of opposition?
Well, there's nobody she presented, and then there's no speakers in favor.
Okay, that just wasn't announced, and so we needed the clock to be reset.
I'm sorry. We've reset it now? Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Nancy Steele, and I live at eight sixteen Mackey Court. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the Lord's Creek Homeowners Association and the vast majority of my neighbors. The question I put before you is, are we overbuilding apartments in the Monkey Junction area? So here is, on this slide, you'll see everything that was approved for rezoning in the past three years in the Monkey Junction area, and this is according to the New Hanover County Planning Department website. You will notice that the majority of housing units planned in the future for this corridor are apartments. Over five hundred apartment units are approved and planned. The subject property is at the bottom of the slide, and it was denied last year, and there is nothing changed about this application. It is still the same project. I'd also like you to note that the Palm Grove Apartments has one of the highest-density rezoning requests, and it has one of the smallest acreage lots, which creates limitations for the complex as compared to others in the vicinity. So there's limited green space onsite and limited recreational areas for residents. On this slide, you will see the current market conditions in the Monkey Junction area for apartments. And what this is indicating is that the marketplace is saturated for apartments. I've visited all of these complexes in the last week. There were no waiting lists to get into a lease. You can move tomorrow. There are incentives where they will give you a discount, and in fact, it lowers the monthly payment to very affordable rates. You will notice the Veterans Park Apartments at the top. You get one month free. A one-bedroom is eight hundred and twenty-four dollars a month. A two-bedroom is nine hundred and seventy dollars a month. So that is quite affordable. The marketplace seems to be providing affordable housing. Here is the site plan for the Palm Grove Apartments, and I bring this to your attention because although this is a little distorted, you will see at the bottom of your screen that there are several homeowners on Glen Arthur Drive that have virtually no trees between their backyards and the apartment complex. There is only an eight-foot privacy fence. The houses, the apartment buildings at the front of the complex are thirty-to-forty-foot buildings. These are not the shorter buildings that are at the rear of the apartment complex. So no trees, just a fence, and a forty-foot tall building is behind three of my neighbor's I've also listed here a number of reasons why we think this is inconsistent with the two thousand and sixteen comprehensive plan. You're supposed to encourage multimodal transportation. This will only encourage vehicles, cars. You can't get anywhere. There is no connection with sidewalks to shopping, no walking, et cetera. So also, the two thousand and sixteen comprehensive plan says that areas that are disconnected from mixed-use centers such as the Monkey Junction Growth Node may not be appropriate for increased density. Thank you. I hope you will consider the opinions of your constituents. The vast majority of them do not want this approved. Thank you.
I know I butchered that up.
That's pretty good.
Thank you.
My name is Penny Wilmoring, Dr. Penny Wilmoring. I live at seven oh seven Bancroft Drive in the Lord's Creek subdivision, and I'm here to talk to you about traffic, everybody's favorite topic. So basically, what we've been hearing, and I'm quite dismayed, as I'm sure all of you are, is that NC DOT is not here. What we heard at the planning committee was, we can't do anything about Carolina Beach Road. We know it's a problem. We're going to continue to approve this development. There are a couple of points here. North Carolina Beach Road in our area, we have two lanes of traffic there. Fifty-five miles per hour is treated as a suggestion. As somebody who drives that road every day, I will tell you it's more like a Speedway. You can see in the top picture, a picture of the entrance to our development, and in the bottom picture, our deceleration lane. Four-twenty-one's highly congested. We've heard it's at capacity, near capacity, over capacity. We don't seem to get a straight answer, but we do know that in two thousand and twenty-one, NC DOT reported thirty-five thousand to forty-five thousand cars travel in that area every day, and there's no traffic relief planned until at least two thousand and twenty-nine, putting all of us at risk. Here's the view just north of the proposed development. The side pavement is the church exit. There's a great church right there. Just beyond the public hearing sign is the proposed development entrance exit, even with the right-hand turn being proposed. You see the widening of the road is Lord's Creek Deceleration. This deceleration lane is used by eight hundred households. We've been told it only affects twelve of us? No. It affects the three subdivisions that depend on that deceleration lane every day. That's Ocean Forest Lakes, Woods Lakes, and Lord's Creek. And let me tell you, the other things that has happened to us recently, people are using that deceleration lane as a third lane. They're stopping when they realize it's not, often with those of us behind them trying to get in. They're also zipping back out into the traffic on Carolina Beach Road, producing hazards for us. Let me talk to you a little bit about the church because this adds to the problem. This is not a down on the church. The church has food giveaways on Thursdays. It's quite popular. They have Sunday services. They are meeting needs of people, spiritual and nutritional needs. You will see in the top picture, this is what the parking lot looks like, and on the bottom picture, the overflow traffic. The cars leaving and entering the church now impede our deceleration lane into Lord's Creek. I've seen multiple accidents almost happen. The pictures show the location. This is the location just north of the proposed development. So we've been told that this will work, that this is really not going to be a human cost to those of us who depend on that deceleration lane. But let me tell you this. You will see that we've got the church right there. We've got the proposed development, and we have our deceleration lane, people flying down that road, whipping, leaving or zipping, according to Mr. James, and we've heard, means that people can simultaneously enter the adjacent lane while another vehicle's performing the exiting maneuver. Now, I have a background in behavioral sciences. That means I understand people's behavior, and I have an opportunity to watch people's behavior. People are not going to yield. It's not going to be just one guy or one woman. People are not going to yield. They're going to pull right out in front of us. Now we have three points where we're going to have potential for problems. So we asked about this. We said, we heard there are examples where you can absolutely, this is safe. No. We went over and we looked at the example right in front of First Citizens Bank, just north of UNCW. Here's what we found. Forty-five mile-per-hour speed limit, a business area, stoplights within a block and a half each way, three lanes of traffic, clear lines of sight. In the proposed apartments, there's fifty-five miles-an-hour-plus mixed residential business, no near stoplights, two lanes of traffic, and I will tell you, there are no clear lines of sight. So it's time we stop kicking this can down the road. We just don't have the infrastructure on Carolina Beach Road and that small parcel of land for those of us who live, work, and enjoy living there to be safe. It's time to protect those of us who are residents and those of us who are voters who live in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. My name is Tom Toby. I live at sixty-six oh five Oliver Court in the Lord's Creek subdivision. I appreciate the opportunity to come back and address you again this year regarding this. My opening remarks will be on behalf of Jeff Anderson, who was not able to be here this evening. When we talk about the diversity of housing that is mentioned, it does not equate to affordability of the housing, and in the last several years, a diversity of housing has been created in New Hanover County. Literally thousands of apartments, condos, townhomes, and single-family homes, both small and large. In our immediate area alone, we have multiple developments going on. Just one mile north at fifty-three twenty-two Carolina Beach Road, there are a hundred and sixty-five apartments and thirty-five townhomes that are approved, and another sixty-two townhomes proposed next to it. A half mile to the south, two at the intersection of Carolina Beach Road and Myrtle Grove Road. Two more developments were approved. And along with those, we have the Developmental River Road. Just two miles away, there are low-maintenance, single-story homes at the Haven currently being built, along with the two hundred and seventy-four apartments that are near completion across the street from that. There are at least a dozen other large tracts of land that are up for sale and will most likely be developed, and we haven't even mentioned the two hundred-plus long-term rentals being built at Carolina Beach. It's been mentioned that single-family residences do not work on a road like this. There is Adams Landing and Cypress Village that are both similar neighborhoods to a single-family residence that are directly off Carolina Beach Road. Lastly, according to the Wilmington Apartment Association states that the vacancy rates for apartments have been up thirteen percent, which is quite a large number. Even the regional economist at UNCW, Mushin Yutavi, states that vacancy rates are up in our area, and I know firsthand that Willoughby Park just recently reduced the cost of their rent from thirteen hundred dollars a month to nine hundred dollars a month to get their vacant apartments rented. The reasons we're here have not changed since last year, as you've seen presented by others. And now, it's even worse a year later. The traffic is the worst thing. Memorial Day weekend, traffic was backed up from Snow's Cut Bridge all the way back to Lord's Creek. The school systems are still not able to handle it. What are they, twenty million dollars under budget at this point? We keep being told that we need this product in southern New Hanover County. We don't. We moved to that end of southern New Hanover County to get away from this type of product. My wife and I left the Arrowhead community because river lights tied into it. Our street was turned into a through street to River Road, and now there are hundreds of homes and townhomes and apartments that have been built back there. And that's why we left. You know, Mr. Zappel, you and I, we sparred back and forth a lot when we were both running for that seat. But the one thing, remember, you impressed me by was when you said that people, when they buy in a community, they have a reasonable expectation for that community to stay that community. And that was in reference to Forest Hills when they were wanting to tear down the apartments. Are we not also entitled to that same reasonable expectation for our community to stay the way it is? This board last year set a precedent already turning down this project one time, and Mr. Ravenbark, if I may be mistaken, but I think it was you that said that this is a great project, just in the wrong area, and that has not changed. And I would like to close by asking everyone in this room that is opposed to the high-density construction to please raise your hand. Please raise your hand. This development is being brought on by somebody from the state of New York that does not live here with us, and I respectfully submit that this is an election year. These are the people that will be voting this year, not an out-of-town developer from New York. So again, respectfully, I ask that you again deny this rezoning request near our community, and I thank you.
[applause]
Sheila Stubbs. Sheila Stubbs. Miss Stubbs, you've got a minute and 58 seconds. Sorry about that.
I can skip some of it, because some of it was very well said by my neighbors. But basically, this proposed development is landlocked, confining. Where does a mother push a stroller or a person of low mobility get exercise and fresh air? I don't think it's a good product. I want people to have homes. I see a lot of impervious surface, a handful of trees, three to five feet of grass before the fence. The buffer transitional zone is a single line of trees that will drop their leaves in the winter. I deliver meals on wheels to many high-density developments. Most are pleasant, with shaded walking paths, green spaces, community centers, large pools. But a few are subpar, and I feel sorry for those people who live there. This isn't a "not in my backyard" issue. I resent the insinuation that was made at the planning board by a realtor who was going to make money. And Cindy Wolf, who said that the southern part of the county is lopsided, and we need a broader range of residents. It seems as if, they never seem to think that a broader range of residents is needed alongside affluent neighborhoods. Cindy Wolf also stated that this development is close to urban services. What services? How close? It's not close to anything. I do not want people to have a place to live. I want people to have a place to live. That's why we donate to Cape Fear Habitat, so people can have homes. Maybe I don't have the vision that these developers have. I can only see a claustrophobic plot, crammed full of buildings, parked cars, impervious surfaces, three to six feet of grass, and a handful of trees, and a stagnant pond. If the developer is truly altruistic and in their desire to provide a quality, affordable rental units, then they need to purchase a larger piece of land closer to services.
Miss Stubbs.
Soars jaws, mask transit, that does not impact wetlands or traffic or the neighborhood. Thank you.
Ms. Wolf.
As was pointed out, there are close to 800 residents in the community behind us, restricted by access to and from only Carolina Beach Road and River Road. Almost 200 of those units have just been built in the last eight years, since 2016. I looked at the aerial photograph, and building continues to occur in there. I think it seems a bit disingenuous for them to suggest that these 64 units, having to use a vehicle to access shopping and daily services, is any different from what they do. It's hard to believe that they would support a commercial center here. That's the mixed-use that we've talked about along this corridor and in the place type. But proximity to public spaces, this project would have that same proximity to Veterans Park and to all of the shopping opportunities up and down Carolina Beach Road. As far as the properties that are immediately adjacent, I'm showing what the existing vegetation is. Obviously, part of the New Hanover County's ordinance for buffering includes replanting where there isn't planting, in addition to the screening fence that we've talked about. We're in a free-market society. All I can refer to is the housing deficit reports as far as our need for housing all over our county. And for it to be affordable, we need to provide some more density. My client does currently work in New York State, but he has multiple properties and is a taxpayer here in New Hanover County. So I think there should be equal opportunities and certainly considerations. I acknowledge that individual CZDs should not, and I believe do not constitute precedence. You look at them on every particular one on an individual basis. But other and larger multifamily projects have been approved on Carolina Beach Road in the past. I beg the question that, what makes this different when I've shown all of the mitigation and the consistency that has been provided and agreed to by staff and the planning board? Thank you.
Okay, you all have five minutes for rebuttal. If Miss Stubbs would like to finish, or whoever.
I just have a couple of remarks. First of all, it is fairly close to recreational area, but the problem is, you cannot walk there. You have to use a car. And if you try to walk somewhere from this property, there are no sidewalks on Carolina Beach Road. It's very dangerous. The traffic goes at a very high rate of speed. There's no shoulders. So if you're going to encourage walking, I think that's dangerous. And it's not just this project. It's 500 other apartments in the same general vicinity that are adding cars to that corridor. So it's not just this one project. It's the totality. So that's my remarks.
Anyone else?
One of the differences is, we're talking about a very small piece of property compared to some of the other sites. Also, this is really not safe for the residents. The proposed residents that would live there, they're going to face the same issues we face on Carolina Beach Road. Also, there's one way in, one way out. Think about what would happen if there was a major emergency and emergency management services. I've talked to some of those folks. They say the plan is not good. It really poses a threat to the people who live there. So we have some concerns about the potential residents as well. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, one of the issues that we talked about last time is this is in part of the narrowest part of New Hanover County, where we have already had acknowledgement that traffic is near capacity already. You couple that with the addition of all of the other surrounding projects, we are going to be severely hampered. Again, traffic was backed up from the bridge to Lord's Creek on one holiday weekend. What are we going to do on that end of the county now when the next major hurricane comes? And we have to evacuate all of these people now through this narrowest part of New Hanover County and out. This project is not a bad project, and we are not opposed to the project in itself. But the area that it wants to be put in does not lend itself well to blending in with the neighborhood. It does not go with anything else that is there. There is no other buildings of this type in this immediate area. And we just, again, we ask you to take that in consideration along with all of the other projects that are currently going on in that area and the properties that are for sale that will be coming before you for other rezoning requests. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. If not, does staff have anything, Robert? So I'm going to close the public hearing now. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Here's where I land on this item. Last year, I voted in favor of it. I was not in the majority. I regret that vote. Plan to do something different today for any number of reasons. But one of the reasons that I want to highlight is this board, this same board that's sitting up here, already said no. Said no last year. And it's been a little over a year. And I think that we would be making a mistake to encourage applicants to listen to the board say no and not come back with even a little bit of a change. To present exactly the same plan after you were told no was a mistake. I plan to vote no today.
Rob.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have too, I came up in some of the discussion here about the housing supply. Because this is a major issue, affordable housing throughout our county, I try and keep a close eye of what's going on. And I think it's too early to say it's a trend. But I noted this past month that the housing supply is at the highest level it's been at since 2020. It's up 76% from last year. That's the supply, meaning that it's on the books. Just under 1,000 homes in New Hanover County. You know, and I've also noticed the same thing about rents in rental spaces, coming down, and the offering of a month or a month and a half free rent. So I won't base my vote solely on that, but that certainly is a curious statistic and data that we're looking at here, because we've been told consistently for the past three, maybe four years, that we have this crisis. And I won't say that it's, you know, it's stopped, but there certainly seems to be, at least at this point, some easing. I think the traffic impacts that were described again last year are still there. That situation, the way it's described, as zipping or weaving, I think it's very dangerous. I also noted that in some of the comments we got, the church, I guess, is adjacent to, with 1,100 parishioners were very much opposed to this as well. That, and again, with the comments that Commissioner Scalise made. This was denied last year, and I just haven't seen any changes. I know the one comment that I did make last year when we did this was, "There's no commercial." There's, you know, nothing to pull people off of Carolina Beach Road or for those people who live there to be able to use services and shops. And no attempt at adjusting the plan to accommodate that. So with that, I will oppose this as well.
Mr. Chair. And for me, I won't repeat any of the comments, because I agree with both of the commissioners' comments that have already spoken. But as you know, I spend a lot of time on that side of town, and the traffic over there is horrendous. And many of the developments, particularly, I was at Boeraberg just the other week. You have to pull out to the right and go down and make a U-turn to come back to Wilmington. I couldn't even get out of the development to go down and make the U-turn to come back. And I know that's exactly what's happening over there in your area as well. That just the traffic signalization, if that's what you call it, is just not up to where it should be on Carolina Beach Road. So that is my main concern, is the traffic and the safety in that area. And to increase density and increase the number of people there would be a concern for me. And I did come here with an open mind to see what changes there were that might would change my mind, but I have to say, I can't support it. While I have you folks here, I do want you to know that our manager has put together quite an impressive multi-use plan that may eventually come your way on Carolina Beach Road. And we're hoping to see that be funded in the future. And so, we hear what you say. I agree with you. We need some multi-use path to get folks off the road and give them a place to ride their bikes and to walk, so they're not in that traffic. So that is in the works. The county is working on that. I don't know how long that'll be. But I just wanted to let you know while I had you here that that is something we're thinking of, but I can't support the project.
Before we proceed with the vote, I would like to invite the applicant to the podium. Based on the board discussion and items presented during the public hearing, would you like to withdraw your petition or proceed with the vote?
I believe we'll withdraw the petition. Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, number 17. You going to take a break now, or are you going to wait enough? What y'all want to do?
Let's keep rolling. We've got a lot to do.
Keep rolling, okay. Request by Cindy Wolf, Design Solutions, applicant to rezone approximately 0.25 acres in R15 residential located at 802 South Seabreeze Road to CZD CB, community business for a commercial structure totaling 1,800 square feet for the use of general retail sales and/or other limited uses. This is a public hearing. We will hear a presentation from staff and the applicant. And any opponent's speech will allow 15 minutes for their presentation and an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. This site is located at 802 South Seabreeze Road and was originally zoned R15 in 1971. At the time, the purpose of the R15 district was to ensure that housing on private wells and septic was developed at low densities. Since that time, private water and sewer services have become available to the surrounding area through Aqua. Also of note is a recently conditioned CB rezoning that was once the Pelican Snowball Stand directly north of the subject lot. To the south is Seabreeze Townhomes, a conditional rezoning that just went through TRC, was approved last year, but does not have preliminary plat approval yet. The aerial photography shows the site is currently undeveloped, located at the corner of South Seabreeze and Service Roads, and in close proximity to the intersection of Carolina Beach and South Seabreeze. The parcel is located within the historic Seabreeze neighborhood. Established in the mid-1920s, this area was a prime vacation resort for African-Americans from the 1930s through the 1950s. Here's some aerial photograph showing pictures of the site from different angles. These are photos representative of development of R15 neighborhoods. Here we see two examples of the proposed principal land use, general retail sales. Here we have the applicant's concept plan. Located on the corner of South Seabreeze and Service Road, the subject parcel is on an undeveloped quarter-acre lot. The applicant's proposal is to develop a two-story, 1,800-square-foot structure for the purpose of establishing a general retail service or other similar land use. The front of the structure will be facing the parking lot. Though the site has two access points, the only entrance for the applicant will be the service road point of access, which will also serve as an exit. The South Seabreeze access point will serve as one-way exit from the parcel. The applicant has conditioned a six-foot-high privacy fence separating the required vegetative buffer yard and the adjacent residential properties. Regarding stormwater, it should be noted that per county engineering, the proposed 6,900 square feet of impervious ground cover does not require state stormwater permitting. As detailed in the concept plan, the subject lot has two access points, one on Service Road and the other on South Seabreeze. This image details all the proposed development within the vicinity of the applicant's request, the closest being Seabreeze Village, located directly north of the subject parcel. The proposed use is expected to generate a traffic increase of approximately 3:00 AM and 11:00 PM peak-hour trips, which is well below the threshold required for a traffic impact analysis. This property is located in the historic Seabreeze community along Carolina Beach Road. This is an area that has not experienced the same interests in higher-density growth as the northern and central portions of the Carolina Beach Road corridor. This area was the focus of the Seabreeze Small Area Plan created in 1989. The recommendations for the area include a revitalization of the businesses and a redevelopment of the waterfront. While much of the surrounding area is low-density residential, there are planned higher-density townhomes to the south and mixed-use commercial to the north. The property's proximity to the Snow's Cut Bridge along a heavily-traveled corridor serves as a location conducive to this type of commercial development. The application proposes a condition to limit some of the uses that would be permitted in a CB district to make the project more compatible with the area. The proposed commercial development provides general retail in a largely residential area adjacent to a highly-traveled corridor. Additionally, due to the area's location adjacent to Carolina Beach Road, it is less likely to be developed for low-density housing. In accordance with the 2024-2028 strategic plan, this proposal meets the following two community-focused outcomes for sustainable land use and environmental stewardship and workforce and economic development. The comprehensive plan designates this property as being part of the community mixed-use place type. The community mixed use includes commercial uses and encourages infill development. At the June 6th Planning Board meeting, the proposed rezoning was met with a vote of 5 to 0 in recommendation for approval with the following four proposed conditions regarding limited uses, screening, a limit on impervious surface, and exterior lighting. After that planning board meeting, I think it was decided that the condition number three was irrelevant for the impervious surface. So that one was removed. And in your staff report and script... So that one was removed, and in your staff report and script, you can see that staff recommends approval with the following conditions regarding limiting the principal uses, installation of privacy fencing with a buffer yard, exterior lighting considerations, and architectural design components. Should the rezoning be approved, development of the site will be subject to additional development review to ensure all land use regulations are met. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions concerning this. Our staff reports, Mr. Scott James of the WMPO and Mr. Tim Low of County Engineering are here to answer questions within their expertise. The applicant has prepared a presentation and will be able to answer more in-depth questions related to the proposed site development.
I was looking, you can turn, you can turn in from Seabreeze Road?
I don't believe so, but I'll go back to that.
You just can't leave Seabreeze Road?
You can't turn, so this is it. You can't turn in. You can exit off of Seabreeze to the right or left. But the only entrance is off of Service Road into the property.
Anybody got anything on that?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Cindy Wolf, and I'm here with Jerry and Dana Vess. They have been looking to locate a family business that they have on their scope and have looked up and down Carolina Beach Road. It's not easy finding something that either is already zoned, is in a reasonable place for a business, and has visibility. And so this site has come up, and obviously, just in the past couple months, Seabreeze Village Commercial was rezoned on the opposite corner. We are at a signalized intersection of Carolina Beach Road and Seabreeze Road South. And so this is where it falls into that intersection. This is the plan. I'd like for Jerry to sort of share some of his insights of why they're, why we're here and what their aspirations are.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for this time and your consideration in this. As Cindy said, my name is Jerry. I'm here with my wife Dana. We moved down to Carolina Beach in 2015 in order to pastor a church. I'm pastor of Seaside Chapel on Dow Road, right next to the fire department. We enjoy serving our community and serving the people there. And we've always been entrepreneurs at heart. We owned a business, small business, in the early 2000s, mid-2000s. And we want to continue that vision here in Wilmington, Carolina Beach area. We have two boys. They're 23 and 20, and so we're looking to do this as a family business. And what we're looking to do is a, like a mom-and-pop's kind of neighborhood bait-and-tackle sportsman supply shop. We feel like this is a perfect area as people are coming, not only in the community, but visitors alike are coming down to Carolina Beach to access the public waterway and intercoastal waterway, sorry. And as they come in, you know, we, we feel like it's a good area because you got the signal there. They can come in, turn on the Service Road, kind of circle through, grab what, bait and tackle, whatever they need, come back out, Seabreeze, at the light, turn back, and then go right over the bridge and enjoy their time, recreation time, whatever, whether fishing or doing something else. And so like Cindy had mentioned, we've been looking up and down for about two years for different businesses that would be suitable with the right correct driveway and all that. For a lot of our customers, we'll probably be pulling boats, you know, going out on the water, and we just couldn't find anything. So this parcel come available, and so we're in the process of purchasing that and hoping it could be rezoned to meet the need.
Circulation-wise, I think that was one of the questions. This has already been vetted by NC DOT as far as just a preliminary driveway look at it. And the reason for the circulation is because we believe that there'll be certain vehicles with trailers. So it's a very small site, granted, but the access road provided the opportunity to go in or out. But then to circle through, if you had a trailer, then you're not blocking anything when people come in the opposite direction. So that's why this is set up, the circulation-wise. The other is, it's on a corner. Because of its small size, it was pretty obvious how we had to set up the building in the parking area. And so the concern is that when you are at that intersection or on Seabreeze Road South, that you're not looking at the back of a building. And so they have committed, as part of the conditions, this is the sort of style that they have in mind, of making sure that both sides of that building have that architectural style, some fenestration, not the back of a building. And we have no problem with that condition. So with that, we believe that this rezoning is consistent, reasonable, and in the public interest. Certainly, the comprehensive plan's community mixed-use type fosters sustainable growth through sensible infill and location efficiency. The proposed development can provide commercial services to enhance the area's character. Approval of a conditional district ensures that compatibility and minimization of impacts with the fence, with the buffers. And the proposal provides an orderly and acceptable transition along Carolina Beach Road. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Cindy, thank you for bringing this forward. Just a couple of quick questions. And I appreciate you, the explanation of where you're headed with this, the bait and tackle, which makes a lot of sense. The concern I have is about the future. You know, if they become such a huge success, they got to find a larger plot and they move out. The uses that are, will be allowed there, is this kind of a yes or no? Will it ever be open to being a restaurant, a fast food, or a brewery?
No, if you'll read the conditions, they're very specific as to what, four or five of them in addition to general retail. They did not, they did not refer to a restaurant.
At all, yeah. I didn't know it, the general category of professional activities.
Offices.
Offices, great. And general personal services, does that include tattoo shops?
It would. Salons and those types of things, but, and we do have water and sewer to this. We didn't exempt the tattoo shop. That's certainly something I'm guessing that they would agree to, if that is a concern.
Do you think your client would be agreeable to that?
Yes, that would certainly be acceptable.
Thank you. Now, is there anything you can do about putting some lighting on Carolina Beach Road as you come off of Snow's Cuts Bridge? Sorry, I'm pulling your leg just a little bit.
He knows I've been pushing for that, too.
I thought maybe there might be some.
I think that's actually in Chris's plan.
Oh, good, yeah. Sorry, that's all I have. Thank you.
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
Okay, there's no one in opposition. So I will close the public hearing. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chair, could I just, one more thing, Cindy. I had to note that it's with the circulation and the, you're taking a left-hand turn as you're headed down to the beach off of Carolina Beach Road. I think the temptation, especially pulling a boat, is to pull directly onto Seabreeze. And then you realize, oop, I can't get into it this way if you miss the access road. Is there, can there be some attempt, and maybe we can't put it in this, for signage to say, if you want to pull in here, you got to pull down the access road. You follow him saying it's so close to the intersection.
I believe signage on the corner can easily have a sign for the shop with an arrow that points down the access road rather than... Because at least, Seabreeze Road, of course, it does have somewhat of a median. When Seabreeze Village gets designed, I think that medium will change a little, but it will stay because of the lineage that they've talked about in improvements from the traffic impact analysis for that project. So I think this is probably the more logical turn, once you've been there once. But I believe that the signage can provide an arrow that would direct traffic that way automatically.
Thanks very much.
Okay, now we're closing. I said, now we're going to close it.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Any more discussion? Okay, before we proceed with the vote, I would like to invite the applicant to the podium. Based on the board discussion and items presented during the public hearing, would you like to withdraw your petition or proceed with the vote?
We'd like to proceed, please.
Have we had any more discussion?
I just asked you. What would you like to discuss?
No, I just didn't, I didn't hear anything.
Chair Rabenbark did ask whether or not there was any further discussion, but I'm sure we can hold.
Well, I just want to make a comment to the gentleman that was just here. I certainly have a soft spot for the American dream of owning your own business, and I think that's a great plan for that area. So I think it'd be good for you and good for the community.
Okay, is there a motion for approval?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for approval with the addendum of one condition, that in the future, tattoo parlors are not allowed in, as a use. And so with that in mind, I move to approve the proposed rezoning to a conditional.
Let's talk about that condition.
Sure, of course.
Is there, you just don't like tattoos? Just kind of wondering where that came from.
Yeah, no, it's not that I don't like tattoos. I think it can be associated with, you know, some negative community. There's a, I just would prefer to have that in there. I don't want to go further. I think there's a negativity that follows with it.
I mean, I don't care about tattoos one way or another personally, but I just don't know that it's fair to put a restriction like that in that area and just that one spot. I mean, does the county have restrictions? I mean, are tattoo parlors allowed or disallowed?
Most of the stuff that we look at has tattoo parlors, it's something that they cannot put, most of these public hearings, if it's a business, the restriction will be that it would not be a tattoo parlor. So it's not, we're not doing anything out of the ordinary. Am I right, Chris?
So I'm probably not the wisest person to answer the room. I see Amy over here. I'm sure there are rules and regulations around where tattoo parlors can be by right versus special use. I am aware of conditional rezonings you've made previously where you have not allowed tattoo parlors and/or other uses.
Right. Not just a tattoo parlor. You're exactly right.
Mr. Chair.
We do it on a case-by-case basis, hopefully. Yes, sir.
Might I, I don't know that I'm prepared today to make a value judgment about tattoo parlors or those with tattoos. I do know that we make various restrictions from time to time. Might I pose a question to the county attorney? Do you have any legal concerns, sir, about us carving out an exception as regards private business and professional activities not to include tattoo parlors?
To answer your question, no, in this specific context, because it is conditional zoning that allows the applicant to agree to certain restrictions on certain types of uses. I agree with the county manager. There are times where tattoo parlors and other uses are expressly prohibited as part of a conditional rezoning. So the answer is no. Qualify that with, the applicant has verbally agreed to doing that. For it to be legally binding, the applicant will also have to consent to that added condition in writing.
Just to, so the applicant understands, you've said that you were okay with it. We're going to put it into there. I'm not going to make a big issue out of it, Rob, if you want to put it in there. But if some tattoo guy comes to you with a big old pile of money and says, I want to put my tattoo parlor here, you're not going to be able to do that. All right.
And then actually, Commissioner Scalise, that's what I was bringing that point up, just the protection of you. You know, I don't care about the tattoo thing one way or another.
I think, listen, I like people with tattoos.
You need to be clear now.
Don't get me wrong, but I also see this as whether we like it or not, it will become a gateway, a visual gateway to Carolina Beach going over there.
And Mr. Chair, I can make a comment. I don't want to leave the impression that we're upsetting with regards to tattoos. Two of my daughters have tattoos. They're great, upstanding women. And I won't, I don't want our county commission to cast an dispersion upon people that have tattoos. Those are the days of old. We're in a new age now. You have pastors preaching in pulpits that have tattoos. And they have to go to a tattoo parlor to get those tattoos. They don't do them at home. So I would not support adding this language in there because you're prohibiting anyone else down the road that may want to have a particular using your property. But I don't want us to disparage folks that have tattoos. I would imagine if I asked for a show of hands of folk that have tattoos in this room, quite a few would raise their hand. And I would not look at you all as being bad people because you went to a tattoo parlor to get a tattoo. So I couldn't support that addition.
I might add to Commissioner Barfield, my daughter also has a tattoo. Actually, two, but I...
I do not have a tattoo, and I don't care if y'all do, so it's okay.
Why don't we just, why don't we just pass it as it is?
All right, I'll withdraw my restriction. However, there are multiple other restrictions that have been placed on this already. And we're not, you know, talking about those at all.
Yeah, I think that the larger point is that we don't want to specifically call out types of business in this fashion, at least I think that's what some of us up here are saying. I don't feel so strongly about it that I was not going to move forward with voting for the motion if it included the anti-tattoo language. But it sounds like there aren't enough people up here that are fired up about it. So let's just, in my opinion, make a motion to approve it with the proposed conditions that staff gave us.
All right, I think we've kind of beat this to the ground. I'll give up on the tattoos. So with no additional condition, I move to approve the proposed rezoning to a conditional community business CB district. I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because the proposed uses are in line with the recommendations of the community mixed-use place type. I also find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest because the development would act as a community service business node to serve both the Seabreeze community and the surrounding area. Proposed conditions, number one, the proposed rezoning's principal use shall be limited to general retail sales, animal grooming service, general personal services, instructional services and studios, and offices for private business and professional activities. Number two, transitional buffers, meaning the requirements of a Type A opaque buffer are required along all property lines adjacent to residentially-zoned parcels. And number three, exterior lighting, including luminaries and security lights, shall be fully cut-off fixtures that are directed downward in compliance with the figures of the UDO. In no case shall lighting be directed at or above a horizontal plane through the lighting fixture. And number four, the proposed development will have an architectural design requiring the structure to be double-fronted. While the wall facing the parking lot will be for the front of the structure, the wall facing South Seabreeze Road will be designed to have an appearance similar to that of the storefront. Approval is subject to the applicant signing on agreement, acknowledging the applicant's consent to all listed conditions. If the applicant does not provide a signed agreement within seven business days from the date of approval, then the rezoning application approval is null and void.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Five aye. Congratulations.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck. But no restaurant. No fast food. No, no.
Okay, number eighteen is rezoning request Z-24-06, request by Cindy Wolf with Design Solutions. Applicant on behalf of La Luli Investments LLC, property owner to rezone approximately .86 acres rezoned R-15. Residential location at 501 and 505 Manassas Drive to CZD O&amp;I Office and Institutional for one commercial structure totaling 8,000 square feet for the use of medical and dental offices. for the use of medical and dental offices, dental office and clinic and other limited uses. So this is a public hearing. We will hear a presentation from staff. Then the applicant and any opponent, we each have fifteen minutes for their presentation and an additional five minutes for rebuttal. Take it away, Robert.
Thank you, sir, members of the board. As you just heard, this request is to rezone approximately point eight-six acres from the R fifteen residential district to a conditional O and I office and institutional district. Project is located on the corner of Manassas and Carolina Beach Road. The R fifteen district in this area was established in nineteen seventy-one. At the time, the purpose of the R fifteen district was to ensure housing served by private well and septic systems would be developed at low densities. Since that time, the Carolina Beach Road corridor has experienced a transition to higher-density residential and mixed-commercial districts from the Monkey Junction growth node to Halliburton Parkway. From the aerial photography, we can see the site is currently wooded and is bordered to the north and east by residential development with commercial development to the south and west along Carolina Beach Road. Here's an aerial photo of the site with images of the property from different angles. Here are examples of nearby residential development. And here's an example of development in the O and I district and a medical office near Monkey Junction. Concept plan includes a two-story, eight thousand square foot commercial building with associated parking along the front of the building with access on Carolina Beach Road. CFPUA has confirmed the nearest public sewer is approximately fifteen hundred feet away from the site. Due to the distance from public utilities, the project proposes a septic system to serve the property. Project includes a solid wood privacy fence to provide a visual screen from adjacent residential development. Also includes a proposed underground stormwater facility away from the septic system. A soils analysis was provided with the application indicating the site is suitable to support the system. Any public access easement along Carolina Beach Road for any future bicycle or pedestrian infrastructure. There are two subdivisions currently under development in the area. While the site is on the corner of Manassas Drive and Carolina Beach Road, DOT conducted a preliminary review of the site and limited access to right-in, right-out only on Carolina Beach Road. Southbound traffic on, southbound traffic on Carolina Beach Road would utilize a U-turn approximately one thousand feet south of the site or an available U-turn further down Manassas Drive. Carolina Beach Road is currently overcapacity in the vicinity of the Manassas Drive intersection. However, the estimated traffic generation of the proposed uses is moderately low, and the proximity of the proposed uses to residential neighborhoods could reduce longer trips on Carolina Beach Road. In addition, the project would be subjected in CDOT engineering review through the driveway permitting process. Property is located south of the Beau Rivage marketplace. That includes a grocery store, pharmacy, and other services. Broadly, the Carolina Beach Road corridor has seen increased interest in higher-density residential, and there has been a trend to commercial and mixed-use projects along the highway. In addition, the proposed rezoning meets two of the objectives of the strategic plan. And the comprehensive plan designates this property as urban mixed-use, which promotes a mix of residential, office, and retail uses at higher densities. This place type encourages office, retail, mixed-use, commercial, and residential uses. Proposed list of limited uses focuses on community-level services and businesses uses in closer proximity to those nearby subdivisions. Additional neighborhood-level services can reduce, again, the need for additional longer vehicle trips on Carolina Beach Road and service an appropriate transition between the highway corridor and neighboring residential development. Planning board considered this item at their June sixth meeting. No one from the public spoke in support or opposition to the request. Planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval, finding the request generally consistent with the twenty sixteen comprehensive plan because the proposed density and housing type, sorry, because the proposed use types are in line with the recommendations of the place type and is reasonable in the public interest because the proposed development would act as an appropriate transition between the road and existing residential development. Staff's recommendation is based on the policy guidance of the twenty sixteen comprehensive plan, zoning considerations, and technical review. Plan proposes neighborhood-level services that can act as a, as a transition and help reduce, uh, some of that traffic on Carolina Beach Road by keeping those services closer to existing residential development. As a result, staff concurs with the planning board's recommendation with seven conditions related to landscaping, signage, exterior lighting, a limitation on uses, tree preservation, fencing, and a public access easement. Staff has received one additional comment related to this request that was provided to you earlier today. Should the rezoning be approved, development on the site would be subject to those additional review processes through the technical review committee. This concludes my presentation. Scott James and Tim Lower here. The applicant has prepared a presentation and can answer any questions.
Anybody, anything for Robert?
No, sir.
Thank you, Robert.
And Cindy?
Hello, I'm Cindy Wolf and here on behalf of Dr. Nathan Graves, um, who operates this particular property under La Luli. Um, he is the dentist of Myrtle Grove Dentistry, which currently is located up there at the Harris Teeter Shopping Center. And this is a great opportunity. He's purchased this land for relocation of his office, so he's on his own property. And, um, that's why we are here for the rezoning. I worked on the veterinary, uh, facility on the opposite side back in two thousand nine. Again, just a perfect opportunity for a corner lot like this going interior to a single-family neighborhood. Small office spaces that are open just basically twelve hours a day. Both of these are generally based upon appointments, and so you've got that surety of the amount of traffic. We went back and forth a couple times. You can see the office on the opposite corner and certainly the commercial along the opposite side of Carolina Beach Road. We looked at this site in a lot of different ways. One was a right-in, right-out off of Manassas Drive, but based upon that adjacent house driveway and the desire of DOT to put any type of driveway onto Manassas as far as possible from the intersection, that created problems. Initially, they, DOT didn't want driveways onto Carolina Beach Road because we tried to, um, limit impacts and conflict points. But between my clients, traffic engineer, and DOT, they worked it out such that the preferable solution became a right-in, right-out as far as possible to the north of the site, as shown on this site plan. There is a partial turn lane taper that is right there now towards the northern part of the site. It goes about four parcels up to a commercial center. So DOT's recommendation was that that turn lane stacking be extended down to roughly the way I have it shown on this plan. Obviously, the detailed design and permitting will go through not only TRC, but the Department of Transportation, and they'll work out the details of it. Um, this site has water along it. There is a fire hydrant right at the corner of Manassas and Carolina Beach Road, but septic, as, uh, Robert pointed out, is too far for a single user to, to try to extend. Um, I know there were some questions concerning that. He has already had a consultant out there testing for the soils and preliminarily creating the, the layout of how a septic system would work, and that's what my plan is based on. So with that, we believe, again, this rezoning is consistent, reasonable, and in the public interest. Certainly, an office is a reasonable transition use along the highway. This does promote fostering sustainable growth through sensible infill and location efficiency. Um, and the conditional district ensures compatibility and minimization of impacts by the fencing on the back part against the residential beside it. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Anybody have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
There, there are no unopposed. Nobody signed up to speak? So at this point, has anybody got, got anything to say?
Um, ju- just a comment. I'd like to say this is what I think exactly the kind of development that we need in that area, services. And the, the more services we have in that corridor and that area, people don't have to come to Wilmington. And, and frankly, quite frankly, the people on the southern end of the county don't want to go to Wilmington. They'd rather stay in their little area so they can provide these services. So I, I'm, I'm good with that.
Yeah, and there's about a million houses behind that, so, I mean, you can just make a living with neighbors. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I was, uh, waiting for public comment, but it didn't sound like anybody signed up.
No.
Um, yeah, Cindy, do we, do we know how far the driveway is from the corner of Carolina Beach Road and Manassas?
The site itself is two hundred feet deep, so roughly a hundred and eighty.
And, uh, that doesn't raise any red flags for, uh, WMPO or the DOT?
Well, there were definitely red flags, but this is two lots. So it's either two driveways, um, or at least one driveway to a residence off of Carolina Beach Road and another onto Manassas where it's severely pinched with the one right-in, right-out, or the scenario that we worked out with DOT, which was move it as far up at, to the top as possible and provide a turn lane into it. It'll be, albeit short taper and turn, but it does provide for, um, because there is a stop situation at the intersection of Manassas and Carolina Beach Road. And so that would give the opportunity to people that are coming through to slow down and make the turn.
Say that again, Cindy. You're trying to make a point and I didn't quite get it at the end.
Well, I guess if they're coming from the south, they're coming through a traffic signal, and they just keep on coming. But there will be a taper and a turn in. If they are coming from the, all of the thousand homes over to the east, that's an easy scenario, obviously. You get in the right, right-turn lane.
Yeah.
And go into the site. If you're leaving, you go north, that's not a problem. The one that is an issue, but it would be no matter what, is that intersection is controlled. You're not supposed to make a U-turn at that intersection. So anyone coming from the north down would take a left onto Manassas, the in lane, and have to make a U-turn, which is about, I'd say, eight hundred feet to the east of this.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that means they would then come back out onto Carolina Beach Road to go into the site, but they would have the advantage of the signal stopping the up-and-down traffic.
There is a, uh, permitted U-turn further down the road, correct?
Yes, there is.
Yeah. So the people coming from the north heading south would have to go all the way down. You, you really put your finger on it. I'm sure you heard some of the comments I made at the agenda briefing. Uh, this is a dangerous intersection because the temptation is for the thousands of homes that are in the back there to simply, uh, you know, don't drive down another quarter mile to get to the U-turn, simply to sneak a illegal U-turn in there. Whether you're turning onto Manassas Drive, that's not a U-turn, I guess. Uh, but, you know, to, to do a U-turn there. And I think that's a temptation there, and that could lead to, um, serious, what do we call them? Vehicle conflicts. Isn't that right, uh, Mr. James? Yes. Uh, another euphemism.
But that is somewhat limited, the U-turn capability. I mean, the people coming out of Harris Teeter, yes, they're just far enough north. But below that, there is the median, so there aren't that many people, unless you've missed what you were doing further north,
Yeah.
that have the reason to make a U-turn there.
Well, I, you know, unbalanced, though, this is exactly the kind of thing that, you know, I have been banging the drum before for a lot. Uh, Cindy, I know that I, every time we run into you, I, I ask for more commercial things to pull people off the road or to not allow them to get on it. So I applaud you, and I'm sure that you have your fingerprints all over suggesting, uh, you know, that the dentist come here because you saw the success of the veterinarian, which I agree. I'll hold it there. That was, it was just that traffic conflict that I saw, but, but let's get more of these kind of projects out there.
Thank you.
Just a comment, um, and I think the manager left, and I know Sarah can answer this. Is that the side of the street that we are talking about, uh, for the multi-use plan? I just wanted to make the applicant aware.
Yes, and we've committed to dedicating that easement.
Okay, very good. Just want to make you aware.
Yes.
No offense. Okay. Well, there's no opponent, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Any more discussion?
Uh, no, I will make a motion to approve the proposed rezoning and conditional B-two district.
Commissioner Pierce, I think, don't we have to ask the applicant up first to?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Before we proceed with the vote, would you like to fight the advocate to the podium based on the discussion?
Thanks.
Presented during the public hearing, would you like to withdraw your petition or proceed with the vote?
We'd like to proceed, please.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I will make a motion to approve the proposed rezoning to a conditional B-two. I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of a comprehensive plan. I also find that approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
I'm sorry. Um, so the, the motion is to approve and that it's consistent along with the applicant-proposed conditions, which must be accepted within seven business days of the date of approval, otherwise being rendered null and void. Is that correct?
Can you add that to my motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, do we need to vote again? Okay, is there a motion?
I'm an aye.
Is there a motion?
I think that was.
Yes.
Madam Vice Chair's motion, I think.
Clerk added those terms to my motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. All right, next one is request by Cindy Wolf with Design Solutions. Applicant to rezone approximately point nine-three acres in RA Rural Agriculture located at forty-seven thirty-seven Castle Hain Road to CZDB dash two regional business for the two commercial structures totaling eighty-seven hundred square feet for the use of general retail for a tire store and other limited uses. This is a public hearing. We'll hear a presentation from staff. Then the applicant and any other opponent, we each will have fifteen minutes for their presentation and additional five minutes for rebuttal. Robert.
Thank you. So this is a request to rezone zero point nine-three acres from the RA Rural Agricultural District to a conditional B-two regional business district. The property has historically been used for both residential and commercial uses since before the RA zoning district was adopted in nineteen eighty-five. At the time of initial zoning, the purpose of the district was to provide for very-low-density, single-family residential development that is compatible in scale and character to, to rural and agricultural settings. Since that time, there have been some light commercial and industrial development in this portion of the Castle Hain Road corridor. From the aerial photography, we can see the existing Dad's Tire Store on the, on the northern portion of the site. And while shown in the picture, the single-family home has since been removed following the fire. Here's an aerial photo of the site with images of the property from different angles. Here are examples of homes in the surrounding RA district. And here are examples of two of the proposed uses. The concept plan proposes keeping the existing Dad's Tire Store. The applicant has volunteered to replace a non-conforming outdoor storage shed with a smaller tire storage building to meet the rear setback requirement. Project also adds a new flex commercial building where the house was. The new flex space consists of two fifteen-hundred-square-foot units, each with a bay door facing Castle Hain Road. The tire store will remain, uh, will maintain the existing three driveways onto Sodney and Castle Hain, while the flex space will use the existing drive previously used by the single-family home. Plan includes a separate parking area for the flex space and an underground trench beneath the parking for stormwater management. There are two significant trees on site. A condition has been included guaranteeing they be retained. Public water and sewer is not available in the area. The site is currently served by an existing septic system and private well. If approved, those would be expanded to accommodate the new commercial space. Septic tanks and wells are regulated through the Environmental Health Division of the Health Department. A condition has been included guaranteeing a maintenance agreement and approval of the well and septic by Environmental Health. There's one subdivision and three TIA's in the area. As we mentioned earlier, there are four existing full-access site drives on the property. The estimated traffic generation is below the threshold that requires a TIA. With the site's proximity to the I-one-forty interchange, two miles south, in past commercial rezonings, this portion of Castle Hain Road is likely to develop into a service node, making new single-family development along Castle Hain Road less likely. The proposed rezoning meets two of the objectives of the strategic plan. rezoning meets two of the objectives of the strategic plan. The comprehensive plan designates this property as community mixed use, which focuses on small-scale, compact, mixed-use development that serves all modes of travel and includes office, retail, and other commercial uses. Planning Board considered this item at their June sixth meeting. No one from the public spoke in support or opposition to the request. Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the project, finding the proposed rezoning consistent with the comprehensive plan due to the proposed uses, and found approval reasonable and in the public interest because the project is appropriate for the area and additional conditions reduce those impacts on, any impacts on neighboring or nearby residents. Staff's recommendation is based on the policy guidance of the comprehensive plan, zoning considerations, and technical review. Due to the proximity to the I-140 interchange and the changing commercial nature of the Castle Hain Road corridor, Staff concurs with the Planning Board's recommendation of conditions related to a limitation on allowed uses, removal of a non-conforming structure, septic and well easements, exterior lighting, and tree retention. Should the rezoning be approved, development on the site would be subject to additional development review to ensure all land use regulations are met. This concludes my presentation. I'm available as Scott, James, and Tim Lowe, and the applicant is here and has prepared a presentation as well.
Any questions for Robert? Thank you, Robert. Ms. Wolf?
Thank you.
You just lined them up today, didn't you?
I'm Cindy Wolf, for the record, and I'm here with Rick Meadows. He and his wife, Deanne, own this property. Records show that that existing building was constructed in nineteen seventies. We believe it probably was just a large barn used by the owner of the home that was right there. He was a trucker and serviced his vehicles. It evolved into a business. It has been operated as Dad's Tire since at least the mid-nineties. It's considered a non-conforming use, but as such, can continue to operate in perpetuity. In April of last year, the adjacent residence, though, burned to the ground. The remains of that house have been removed, along with a couple of the accessory buildings. Rather than construct a new house, the potential for rezoning for a small commercial building and thereby bringing the existing tire store into current zoning compliance made better sense. This aerial is a little bit closer in than what Robert had. It will include the removal of that shed with the yellow X under it as part of the proposal. As he pointed out, it is along the Castle Hain Corridor. There are business districts along there. It is in the community mixed use place type in the comprehensive plan, so everything seemed to fall together for this proposal. This is what the proposal would be as far as layout. We'd subdivide the properties into two. That makes sense, again, just that separation of uses, and create the new plan where the residential driveway was, but it would be a commercial building to house both a business that he runs and then the potential for rental of more space. These are the two existing significant trees we've committed to preserving, and as I said, the Dad's Tire Store, the rear building, would be removed so that it was, it will be conforming to the setback and buffering requirements. The new building is totally conforming to everything. It's on a vacant site. This is an architectural sketch of what his vision for the building style would be, and one of the questions came up as to septic systems. I'm certainly not an authority on environmental health and the septic systems, but I did get the initial, or the last files for the septic system that was redone for the house back a few years back. That's where we're showing it. What I wasn't aware of on the plan that was probably in your files was that new septic systems cannot go where old septic systems, I guess, have already muddied the soils, but we feel that there is still adequate land, and my client met with a septic installer just today as far as relocating the septic system in that area between the building and the parking and being adequate for that purpose. It would require the, where we showed the well, to be at least a hundred feet away from it, and we also have adequate land to relocate that well. So, obviously, the TRC and the Health Department will be implemental in the detailed design and permitting, but we feel that this proposal, as it sits, is viable for your approval. We do believe that the rezoning is consistent, reasonable, and in the public interest. It promotes fostering sustainable growth, again, through sensible infill and location efficiency. It's a service. I think as things are evolving with water and sewer systems up in the Castle Hain area, this corridor along here will be a perfect opportunity for the services to the houses and the residential communities that hopefully will come. Approval by conditional district ensures compatibility and minimization of impacts on adjacent residences, and the proposal provides an orderly and acceptable transition. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Cindy, there was a question I brought up at the agenda review about the parking. It seems the site plan here shows a total of four spots plus a handicap, and on your concept plan, you have at least two more that are put up, parking spaces in front of the building. The reason I bring up is a question because we were leaving open what that building will actually be used for. Thus, a flex space, it could be used for multiple things, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But one of them is such, like this. My client has a large panel van, and that's his business, so he can park it out in front of the garage door, he can park it inside. So I feel like we addition to the five spaces that are shown as actual spaces, we've got the two spaces in front of each door, and we have the potential for parking in the building.
In the building?
Sure.
I see. So the owner's, the intent is for him to use this building and not rent it out?
Half of it.
Half of it. And the uses, I think you had them listed as to what it could be?
That's correct.
All right, and you're not concerned, or, you know, that it could be one of these others that would require a lot of parking, or more than four spaces plus one?
I believe in that situation, the market drives. There are only the five exterior parking spaces, plus the four in front of the doors, and the potential for some inside the building. But if I'm looking for a building to occupy and I've got a salon, no. Number one, the septic system wouldn't support it, so that would be kicked on down the line until the potential for public sewer and water was there. So it's evolving, but I try, when I come before you, to make sure that I'm trying to cover their bases for the future.
Right. My concern is we don't end up with parking all over the front lawn here.
Sure.
And I know that we wouldn't allow that, and you wouldn't recommend it.
This meets the criteria for this type of use.
Do we have anybody here from Environmental Health? Thank you, I thought I recognized you. I'm the reason you got called here, and I apologize. Well, I didn't apologize, I didn't know. Cindy covered it, they got the word, and there's more to be told. They obviously have to come up with an expansion plan for, or relocation plan for that septic system. I thank you for being willing to be here and to sit through this long meeting, but it's a concern. You know, I hate septic tanks, but I'm sure glad you're there to make sure that whatever we do is safe, and also the distance from the well as well, which I know you'll make sure that we have that safe distance. Oh, yeah, well, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Could you identify yourselves?
I'm Melissa Lombardi, Environmental Health Manager.
And I'm Dustin Vinsky. I'm the lead for Septic and Wells with the county, so, yep.
Well, again, thank you for being available and for coming here and sitting, but I think at this point, we have more to, more to come on this plan.
Yep, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, there's no opponent, so I'm on. Staff have anything else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There is one person in opposition.
I am so sorry. Ryan Meckler? I'm sorry, Ryan.
How are we doing this evening? I'm Ryan Meckler. I'm the property neighbor to the rear or south, however you want to call it. Just have a few questions that hopefully could be answered, or at least answered before we get the approval. The number one thing, seems like it's a flex space, so I do wonder type of business and what hours that we can expect that they'll be kept, open and closed. Will they be getting deliveries late at night, early in the morning, stuff like that. Traffic impact, I saw a slide that said that there was a minimal traffic impact. Just was wondering if that was done by someone, or is that just Cindy Wolf saying that? Plan for water, storm water. I noticed in the first drawing that came out in June, unfortunately, it wasn't able to come out in June, there seems to be some changes to the drawing. I noticed that it didn't originally have the tank for the storm water underneath the parking lot, and they switched to that. I also noticed there is a call out, the site runoff will flow into the Prince George Creek watershed. Not familiar with where that is, so I had to look it up. It's four miles away. I'm not sure how the water's going to make it there. So, do have a big concern that after adding all of this concrete asphalt buildings, that the water is all going to end up in the road and on my property and the surrounding neighbor's property. Also would like to know what kind of jobs is this going to create for Castle Hain? Is it going to be just like Dad's Tires, who only employs the owner of the Dad's Tires? Every once in a while, he might have one employee one day during the week, but these are not businesses that are exactly employing a lot of people that live in the county. So we'd just like to see it, at least if it's going to come, it's not going to be a single-family home, then at least it could, you know, provide jobs of four, five, six employees maybe, minimum. But that's really all I have. I don't want to waste any of your time. I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Wolf, do you like to answer any of those questions?
I don't know that the que, that there are answers to those questions per se. As I said, one of the units my client's interested in using for himself, he's basically a seven-to-sixer, or, you know, he has a truck. He's off-site for client visits, and so sort of an in-and-out type of situation. Another use, but typically for this type of facility, is the same thing. They have, they need area, warehousing-type area for storage, and they take it away. They have their, one of the things that we conditioned was no outside storage, so yeah, this could be some type of a contractor, but if it were, all of that storage would have to be interior to the building. And again, contractors then generally go off-site for work. As far as employment, that's sort of indeterminate. My client works alone. If Dad at Dad's Tire works alone, that certainly, I believe he does have some other folks that work with him.
How about the time? You know what time they're thinking about opening and closing?
I believe Dad's is basically an eight-to-five business. They don't have night hours or anything, or weekends for that matter. Watersheds are documented on the GIS maps by New Henry County, and they're large areas. A watershed is just the point at which it gets to, or how the water eventually ends up in the Cape Fear River. So I take those right off of maps that are provided by the county. This happened to be the Prince George, but I'm sure that there is quite a long series of ditches or creeks or streams that get it from this location down. The soils on this property, initially, because what we're developing on that second lot, not Dad's Tire, which is already existing rooftop and impervious surfaces, is under ten thousand square feet, I didn't think that there was any stormwater management required. It will be because of some other criteria in this county's stormwater ordinance that are cumulative of existing and new. So what happens is we are over that thirteen thousand square foot threshold. We will be required to provide county attenuation on the new site with new surfaces. We will only have to maintain that, the new surfaces on that, and the project is not big enough for state stormwater permitting. So that's sort of, I think, tries to cover everything that I'm aware of. This is a very, you know, low-impact type of use, and it certainly faces Castle Hain Road, along with Sodney for the tire store. This gentleman's property is about eight hundred to a thousand feet behind our property.
Does that help you with any answers, sir?
I just don't understand how the water's going to make it to the creek, and I don't understand the actual plan that was done to assess, like, how large will this water tank underneath the parking lot be, and is it based off of the size of the lot so it can hold enough water?
Well, I would think that the water would be finding the same way it's been finding it for however long that store's been there.
With, well, with the addition of the two buildings that they're building and the driveway, there'll be more, there'll be less grass than there was before. The house that burned down did not have a driveway. It was just grass that you just pulled off the road onto. So that's like my biggest concern, where is all that water? That's, the ground is no longer going to hold, going to go to now. And also Dad's Tires is open from nine to nine and is open on Sundays.
Commissioner's up.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you just said Dad's Tires is open nine to nine and open on Sundays?
He gets there at nine AM, lights are on, opens up the business, doesn't leave till nine PM. He's there again at nine AM on Saturday. Sign out front says, "By appointment only on Saturdays," but he is open all day on Saturdays, just nobody happens to come in.
And Cindy, I'm assuming the stormwater tank that's underneath is sized to handle the amount of impervious square footage that's been created in excess of, you know, I guess the extra three thousand feet or whatever was there before. Am I right?
That, there wasn't anything there before, other than the house, so he's correct about that. Of course, that didn't require, neither of these properties required any stormwater management in the past. It won't necessarily be a tank. The soils there are extremely sandy, and so it is our hope that it will actually be an infiltration, underground infiltration. But that has to be, we did not go through that exercise, because we come here and you start throwing money at everything before you know that you have a viable project. But I confirmed with county engineering that if the soil infiltration rate or the seasonal groundwater depth is not sufficient for the standard infiltration that would meet county standards, then an R-tank is available. And again, TRC, going through that process before they could get a building permit on this building, would monitor and have the detailed design of how large that infiltration basin or that tank would have to be. So it's, and then there is generally some type of overflow. There isn't really much of a roadside ditch along Castle Hain Road in this particular area, but that is generally, as I think someone pointed out, what happens when the infiltration, if it's a large storm event, it comes back up out of the drainage basin and then goes where it goes right now.
Yeah. Ditching is the conveyance. Was there any discussion with the owner about closing time for the businesses?
Would you let-
His hours are closed at six. I mean, I was there for the community information.
Cindy, I just had a constituent that was nice enough to send me their hours.
Okay, thank you.
They're nine forty AM to five forty PM, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and ten to two on Saturday and closed on Sundays.
All right.
Or that's what he advertises.
I met Dad a couple times now in the past, and he sort of lives for his business, so if he's there later hours, no more power to him. I wish he'd go home. But those are his hours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Might I just offer this thought, pose this question? Ms. Wolf, the property owners, the Meadows, have every desire and intention to be neighborly to the people that are in the surrounding area and be considerate of their needs and fears as they proceed with this project. It should be approved.
Certainly.
Obviously, this is the, this is the sort of thing that I would say, generally speaking, we do want to see. There's need utility for this, but there are people who live there, and I would, just from my perspective, encourage, even though I'm not going to make this a condition, please be mindful of the neighborhood and neighbors such as the gentleman who spoke to us, and I think perhaps that will alleviate some of the concerns.
Certainly. Certainly.
Okay, staff, y'all have anything? Okay, anybody else have anything? No, I'm gonna close this public hearing, is there any more discussion? All right, before we proceed with the vote, I would like to invite the applicant to the podium based on the board discussion and items presented during the public hearing. Would you like to withdraw your petition or proceed with the vote?
We'd like to proceed, please.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the proposed rezoning to additional B2 district. I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan, because the rezoning provides for the types of uses recommended in the community mixed-use place type. I also find recommending approval of the rezone request is reasonable in the public interest because of the application limits uses to those which are appropriate for the area, and additional conditions reduce impact on adjacent residential areas. I make reference to the proposed conditions that were previously agreed to, and this approval is subject to the applicant signing an agreement acknowledging the applicant's consent to all listed conditions. If the applicant does not provide a signed agreement within seven business days of the date of approval, then the rezone application approval is null and void.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Five aye. Thank you. Ten minutes. Yeah, let's take, we're gonna take a br- ten-minute break.
You all ready?
Let's go, guys. Come on. Next on the agenda is a request by Mattson, Wicksel, and Hoyt and Barini. Applicant on behalf of Southeastern Freight Lines Incorporated, property owner, to rezone approximately 3.73 acres of 4.24 acres owned V2 regional business located at 2824 North 23rd Street to CCD AC Airport Commercial for the use of major freight transportation warehousing to expand the existing Southeastern Freight Lines facility. This is a public hearing where we hear a presentation from staff and the applicant and any opponents will be allowed 15 minutes for their presentation and an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Chair. Located at 2824 North 23rd Street, the site was originally zoned AI Airport Industrial in 1976. It was then rezoned in 1986 to B2 for more flexibility and a wider range of potential uses. Currently, the site is vacant. It was a previous site of a legal, non-conforming manufactured home park. The previous property owners closed the park and there are no tenants within the project area. Here's an aerial photo with images of the property from different angles. Here you can see examples of a B2 development. This is what you might see in an AC Airport Commerce district. Here's the applicant's concept plan. Along North 23rd Street is a proposed trailer yard expansion. On the southern portion of the site is a proposed employee parking, sorry I jumped the guns, in the pink. And then you can see the proposed dorm motor ponds. Access is through the existing drive as well as Southeastern Freight Lines facilities. Here you can see the existing mobile homes that will remain and are not included in the project area. There are two on that site in the green area. As well as an existing laundromat along North 23rd Street. The property currently has full access onto North 23rd Street as well as access through Southeastern Freight Line for larger commercial vehicles. There are two state transportation improvement projects in the area, the details of which have been provided in your staff report. And the roundabout at Castle Hain in North 23rd Street will improve the flow of traffic at the intersection. Construction is planned to begin in 2027. The proposed development would generate less traffic than what the property is currently zoned for. Residential growth in the area as well as the expanded transportation network on I-140 has increased the demand for commercial services along Castle Hain Road. With Wilmington International Airport expanding, the county has seen other rezonings to Airport Commerce that can directly and indirectly support the airport by creating areas for compatible uses that would not conflict with the airport. The proposed project would meet the strategic goal of allowing future expansion of an existing business. The comprehensive plan designates this property as being part of the community mixed-use place type and the employment center place type. Community mixed-use includes commercial uses and encourages infill development. Employee center serves as employment and production hubs where office and light industrial uses are easily available. The proposed project will provide a buffer between the employment center place type and the community mixed-use place type development patterns in the area. The planning board considered this item at their June 6 meeting. The board voted five to zero to recommend approval of the petition. Staff's recommendation is based on policy guidance of the 2016 comprehensive plan, zoning considerations, and technical review. Staff is recommending approval because the proposed use is an expansion of a neighboring compatible use in the employment center place type as well as providing commercial development compatible with its proximity to Wilmington International Airport. Should the rezoning be approved, development of the site will be subject to additional development review. This concludes my presentation. Mr. Scott James of the WMPO and Mr. Timbrough of County Engineering are here to answer any questions. The applicant is here if you have any questions for them, too.
Namaste, Chair.
With that, we don't have any questions. We just need to see the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Mattson Wicksel with Hoyt Barini. And we are the civil engineers for Southeastern Freight Lines representing on this project. We do not have a presentation prepared other than what was done in the staff report. We're here to answer any questions for the project, so please let us know.
I'm sorry, your first name was Max? Is that what you said?
Mattson.
Mattson, thank you. Mattson, what's happening on, I'll call it the flagpole of a flag lot? That long extended, very thin portion of the lot, it looks like it connects to a driveway that takes it over to Blue Clay? Is there any idea of using that for access? What's happening on that?
No, that is not for access. That is for easements. Do you mind bringing up the site plan?
Yeah. Right, you see what I'm talking about in that?
I'm talking about this section right here.
That's it, right there.
This was a piece that was added to the larger parcel during the property purchase. And it is for utility easements.
I see, okay. So there's no chance of, you know, connecting it to Blue Clay Road?
Correct.
Thanks, Mattson.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
There's no opposition. So, does staff have anything else?
No, no, Chair.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there any board discussion?
I'm ready to proceed.
If not, before we proceed with the vote, I'd like to invite you to invite the applicant to the podium. Based on the board discussion and items presented during the public hearing, would you like to withdraw your petition or proceed with a vote?
Proceed with the vote.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning. I find it to be consistent with the 2016 comprehensive plan because the proposed use is an expansion of a neighboring compatible use in the employment center place type. I also find recommending approval of the rezoning request is reasonable in the public interest because the project will provide commercial development that is compatible with its proximity to Wilmington International Airport. Approval is subject to the applicant signing an agreement acknowledging the applicant's consent to any listed conditions. If the applicant does not provide a signed agreement within seven business days from the date of approval, the rezone application is null and void.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Five aye. Thank you. Next public hearing, text amendment request TA-24-03. Request by Samuel Frank with Ward and Smith, PA applicant to amend Article 4 of the Unified Development Ordinance to change the use of senior living, independent living, retirement community from requiring a special use permit to permitted by right in the RA Rural Agricultural District. And... This is a public hearing where we hear a presentation from staff, then the applicant and any opponents will be allowed 15 minutes for their presentation and an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
This is an applicant-led text amendment request to change the table of uses to allow senior living, independent living as a by-right use in the RA Rural Agricultural Zoning District. Currently, the use of senior living, independent living, retirement community requires a special use permit for projects in the RA zoning district. A by-right use means all reviews and approvals are granted by staff through the technical review committee. Senior living, independent living is defined as a housing development that may contain a variety of housing types designed for and restricted to occupancy of households having at least one member who is 55 years of age or older, living independently. Unlike other types of senior living such as a continuing care or assisted living facility, independent living retirement communities have the same form and function as development that is not age-restricted. Often, the primary difference between an independent senior living development and other apartment or subdivision development is a private covenant restricting age. Staff identified three county plans that speak directly towards senior housing: the Housing Needs Assessment, the Master Aging Plan, and the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The Housing Needs Assessment identified an overall housing gap of 12,000 rental units and almost 17,000 for sale units over the next 10 years and projected an almost 25% increase in senior households 75 and older. One objective of the new Hanover County Master Aging Plan is to attract private builders and developers by offering incentives to build lower-cost community living spaces. Local governments incentivize development through a variety of methods. One method is to relax previous zoning restrictions for specific development or housing types to encourage more private investment. Staff's review of the proposed text amendment found it to be generally consistent with the comprehensive plan because the proposed amendment would allow the development of senior housing in a residential zoning district without the additional step of a quasi-judicial hearing and board approval. The 2016 comprehensive plan, Housing Needs Assessment, and Master Aging Plan collectively indicate a rising need for senior housing and a need to reduce barriers to the development of senior housing to meet current and future demand. The planning board considered this item at their June 6 meeting. No one spoke in opposition or support of the request, and the planning board unanimously recommended approval. Staff encouraged the planning board's recommendation of the proposed amendment as written. If approved, staff would update the UDO and have it available through the county website. This concludes my presentation. Available for any questions. And the applicant is here with a presentation as well.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. Anybody got any questions from Robert?
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Frank?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Sam Frank. I represent the applicant. I don't have a whole lot to add. I have a brief presentation, and I'll go through it quickly. The use that we're talking about is distinguished from any other residential use solely by the imposition of an age restriction. That's it. I don't know the motivation behind the code establishing a requirement for a special use permit if one wants to impose an age restriction. But faced with an opportunity to explore options for a new development in the county that included an age-restricted component, we ran into that and queried as to whether or not it made sense to continue, reached the conclusion that it does not, on discussion with staff, and therefore have proposed this amendment. No? Okay. Maybe if you could just go to the staff report slide that shows the chart with the proposed change. So, for the reasons that Mr. Farrell described, absolutely consistent with your comprehensive plan on several fronts. No reason to reiterate those, so I'm certainly prepared to speak to them if you have questions for us about them. And that'll be the conclusion of my remarks unless you have any questions for me.
Yes, Mr. Frank, I guess I'm... What's the practical result here?
The practical result is if one proposes a residential development that is otherwise permitted by right with regard to density and all other technical requirements and wants to incorporate a 55-plus age restriction, a private covenant that says one may not live there unless you have at least one occupant who's 55-plus, we will now not have to seek a special use permit to impose that age restriction.
So merely the inclusion of the age restriction takes it out of whatever sort of development proposal that we're in theory talking about, takes it out of a by-right application and moves it into a different category entirely where you have to then...
Special use permit.
Go through the special use permit.
Yes, sir, that's correct. There is no density perk, there are no technical requirement perks associated with residential that is senior living, independent living, retirement community. The only distinction between that use and any other residential is the age restriction.
Why, forgive my ignorance, why, for instance, wouldn't you have just brought this to staff's attention and said you should explore making this change and this be a staff-led endeavor as opposed to you advancing it?
I did, and let me answer your question, then let staff, if they're inclined to, as well. Time is the answer to your question. So staff proposes cleanup text amendments from time to time. I believe that this would have been something that may have been suitable, but I wanted to let staff answer that directly. But I also recognize that if staff were to propose it, it would be sometime more distant in the future, and we wanted to go ahead and address it when we recognized it.
That's all at this time, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Rebecca, what is your thought as to why it's written the way that it is now?
So, when we first started having these conversations with Mr. Frank, when he was asking us about this, we did go back and look at the minutes from when the senior living uses were all added to the development ordinance. It was the early 2000s. It appeared that any type of senior living community at the time was relatively new in this area. And there was a lot of conversation at that point in time between, so what is independent living compared with assisted living compared with a continuum of care project that has different types of senior living opportunities? At the time, staff actually recommended that independent living be allowed by right, but due to discomfort, once it got to the Board of Commissioners, since it was something new or something they hadn't seen at that point in time, they requested that all of the senior living options require a special use permit. When we had the conversation a few months ago as well, we did talk about, well, what happens if someone were to come through, get approval for a single-family housing subdivision, and then later decide to put an age restriction on it after we've already signed off and given our approval? And at that point in time, the only recourse that we would have would be to give them a fine of, you know, the hundred dollars a day of being in violation. There's not really a good way to deal with it retroactively. It requires you to know the ordinance. So as Mr. Frank mentioned, it was something that staff was generally supportive, but we won't be bringing forward a maintenance amendment to this board for another couple of months, probably. And so there was a timing factor.
We have two communities, I'm aware of, in our county. One is off of Carolina Beach Road, Soundside, something maybe, or... And there's the Dell Webb community in River Lights that's dedicated 55 and older. Anything outside of any other norms in the neighborhood would they be participating in? Anything different about the neighborhood over 55 other than that?
So, to your point, Commissioner Barfield, there are multiple categories for senior living in your code. And senior living, assisted living incorporates additional uses above and beyond standard residential use. You have nursing care, you have food, provisional food services, and the like. In this case, we are only talking about the senior living, independent living use as defined on the chart, which, as best we can tell, is purely residential along with an age restriction. So no, I believe is the answer to your question. The potential project that motivates this text amendment and the desired change here is related solely to the ability to age-restrict a residential use that's otherwise permitted by right.
I guess in those neighborhoods, there's different connotations that people may have or interpretations as well. I've got a client buying a home in Durham, and they're buying it in a 55 and older community. Her son, who's probably in his mid-20s, asked her, is she now a swinger? That was his interpretation of a 55 and older community. Others thinking it's something different, just all these different machinations of what a 55 and older community is, but it's really just 55 and older.
I'm not qualified to respond to that.
One person thought it was a geriatric place, and said, no, it's just people my age that don't want to have children around.
There are, well, first, to finish answering your question about the two communities you cited, I don't know the nature of the use of either of those two. I just recognize that they may be, they may include some assisted component, or they may not. I recognize that your code spells out different uses there. The distinction between a community where people of a 55-plus age demographic choose to live versus one that's restricted to being accessible to those in a 55-plus age demographic is exactly what we're talking about. There's nothing about your code, of course, that prevents communities from having a trend towards residents of that age demographic. But today, if you want to impose a restriction on occupancy and residents that is designed to satisfy that 55-plus desire, and people look for that type of community from time to time, you would need to seek a special use permit to do it.
I'm fine with the change.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Change, Chair.
Yes, sir.
Sam, who's your client?
So, I'm the applicant in this case.
Oh.
My client is a contract purchaser for a piece of land, a relatively large piece of land in the northern part of the county that's zoned RA.
I see, so we're going to be seeing a community come forward?
Hope so.
Yeah.
I mean, at this point, we're way ahead of any sort of specific site plan or even design layout. Really just exploring the options. But we recognize that we want one component of it to be, we want it to be age-restricted and recognize the zoning district that the land is in. So, in the interest of playing by the rules and having an opportunity to update the rules in a way that makes sense, we propose this to you.
Sam, I get it. I think that the success of the, Commissioner Barfield just mentioned, the Dell Webb community down in River Lights, I think we're going to see more and more of that in there. You're just a little ahead of the game, so, you know, and thank you for playing within the rules. I appreciate that.
Always, yes, sir.
And again, this proposed development, or this development that's in discussion in the planning stage could be done by right, meaning you don't have to come and see us, but for this age restriction, and you're saying, let's go ahead and get that fixed so that...
I know that that's one component. I don't know that I won't be back before you
Okay.
six to nine months from now with a proposal for a use that adapts the RA zoning... -six to nine months from now with a proposal for a use that adapts the RA zoning to something else. It's possible, but it's also possible that we're not. What we know at this point is that we'd like to incorporate an age-restricted component in the total development.
I guess I just want to make clear on the record and for the benefit of the public that what's being requested isn't some end-around to achieve something that you wouldn't otherwise be able to do, you're just making a technical fix that allows this age component to be added-
Yes, sir.
-to the conversation.
Exactly. It allows for imposing an age restriction without a requirement for a special use permit.
All right. I'm sorry to be so tedious about this, I just want to understand it.
Totally understandable, but from where I stand, that is the beginning and the end of the proposal, is to allow age restriction without the requirement of a special use permit and nothing more.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
There's no opponents signed up, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Is any more discussion anybody have? Okay. Before we proceed, I would like to invite the applicant to the podium. Based on the board discussion and items presented during the public hearing, would you like to withdraw your petition, request continues, or proceed with the vote?
Please proceed, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Anyone got a motion they'd like to make?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a move to approve, a move to prove, approve of the proposed amendment to the New Hanover County Unified Development Ordinance to allow the use of senior living, independent living, retirement community as by right in the RA Rural Agricultural Zoning District. I find it to be consistent with the purpose and the intent of the 2016 Comprehensive Plan because it provides for a range of housing types, opportunities, and choices for seniors. I also find approval of the proposed amendment reasonable and in the public interest because both the Housing Needs Assessment and the Master Aging Plan have identified a need for additional senior housing to serve current and future demand.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five vote.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next is a request by New Hanover County to amend Section 1033C7 of the Unified Development Ordinance related to the required agreement to conditions for conditional rezoning applications. This is a public hearing, we will hear a presentation from staff and any supporters and opponents. We each have 15 minutes for the presentation and additional five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Chair. This is a presentation on a proposed staff-led amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. The UDO states that if an application is denied by the Board of Commissioners, the same or similar application cannot be submitted for one year from the date of denial unless specific conditions of the ordinance are met. Similar provisions are common in county and municipal zoning codes. The purpose is to prevent reapplication of denied projects that do not show substantial differences from what was previously denied by the governing board. State general statutes state that conditions may be added to conditional rezoning applications provided they are consented to by both the board and the applicant, and that the applicant has agreed to the conditions in writing. Currently, if an applicant agrees to a condition of approval but does not provide the required written agreement within seven business days, the rezoning approval is considered null and void and is not subject to the one-year waiting period. At their March 18 regular meeting, the board directed staff to draft an amendment to the UDO specifying that if an applicant does not sign the required conditions agreement within seven days of board approval, a rezoning application is considered denied. This evening, we will be presenting three versions of the proposed amendment, the original draft, the planning board's recommendation, and staff's recommendation following the input received from the planning board in consultation with the attorney's office. This slide shows the original proposed text. This would render applications denied if an applicant does not provide the required written agreement within seven business days. Planning board considered the proposed amendment at their May 2 meeting. Due to the language about an application being rendered denied, the planning board expressed concerns about the amount of time an applicant has to sign the agreement. The board and staff discussed whether 15 business days would alleviate their concerns, but planning board members expressed additional concerns that 15 business days may not provide enough time for an applicant to review and sign the agreement in some situations. Planning board also discussed the provision to allow applicants to request an extension from the Board of Commissioners if good faith efforts are underway to resolve conditioned language. The board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the amendment with the planning board's recommendation shown in green. The intent of the proposed amendment is to ensure the language of all conditions are finalized and decided on during the public hearing. In recognition of the planning board's concerns and guidance from the attorney's office, this evening, staff is recommending 15 business days for the applicant's agreement to conditions to be signed and returned to the county, but that no additional extension be granted. This concludes staff's presentation. If approved, the next steps would be for planning staff to update the UDO and post the updated version to the county website, available for any questions.
Robert, why is this necessary? Seven business days is what we're currently doing, correct?
Correct.
The intentionality, as I recall, behind our adjustment to this language was to make sure that applicants understood whenever we granted an approval, the approval was to be followed up on expeditiously, and there wasn't supposed to be a whole lot of back-and-forth. At least, this is my understanding of what we were trying to achieve, and that if they didn't understand that, then perhaps they shouldn't have been in the position of asking the commission for approval at that time. I certainly will defer to the county attorney if there's a legal reason why we need to extend it from seven days to 15 business days, but I would be inclined for us to leave it just as is. I don't understand why we need to make this change at all.
That was the understood intent by staff and the direction of the board. We also, you know, as part of the public hearing process, taking it through the planning board, that is the advisory board, that there were some additional concerns they raised which led to staff's proposed-
Is there anyone here from the planning board tonight?
Yes, sir. Mr. Avery?
Mr. Avery.
I'm sorry, Mr. Avery had to leave.
Jordan?
So I'd like to say, I think this amendment in some ways addresses two things. One was, it sprung from an instance where an applicant did not consent to the conditions in writing after the fact. That, under the current language, did not operate as a denial, triggering the one-year prohibition on reapplying. So that's one component of it. Say, the second component of it is the delineating the number of days would now be in the UDO. Right now, the number of days is just driven by what we put in your scripts. That could be changed at any time. The UDO right now, on the when to sign the conditions, is silent. That's just driven by the scripts before you. So it kind of tackles two things, but as far as the number of days, it's certain the board's prerogative.
Right, and I think that's really what I'm driving at here. This is a policy decision that this board previously made, and I don't know that I necessarily want or appreciate the planning board to give directives to us on policy decisions that we previously made fairly clear and suggest changes like this when they haven't been suggested or contemplated by us. I could be completely off-base here, and perhaps we should get into this during our discussion, but I don't understand why we're doing this, and I'm not inclined to support it at present.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chair? Sorry, go ahead, John.
Where did, when, where did the seven days come from initially? Because it's something relatively new.
Commissioner Barfield, I'll take responsibility for that. The conditions, the requirement to have the applicant sign something in writing, in my view, when I came here, was not addressed. So we worked with planning and the clerk's office to create the language that's typically in your scripts, and we just ultimately landed on seven days and some back-and-forth among staff.
And so the board never voted on seven days? This is something that was added to the script?
Yes, sir.
You know, with real estate contracts, you know, when it comes to closing and whatnot, there's a phrase, when things are delayed sometimes, as long as a person using their best efforts, there's some grace given. And I would assume that if we put some conditions on something at the last minute, people need to figure out what it's going to cost them to comply with those conditions. You know, you're wanting people to go in and put an eight-foot fence, two hundred feet, you know, there's a cost to that, and it may take you a little bit longer than seven days to get an estimate on what that is, and it may make the project work or not work. And, you know, I know we can dish things quite often with things that someone may not have expected. Again, for me, to know the seven days is something that came out of the air, so to speak, and, but I would say, a little bit of grace, you know, 15 days, not 20, will give people enough time to kind of count their pennies, so to speak. I guess the phrase, you know, count the cost, so to speak, in terms of what it's going to be, then make a determination there. But if seven days is arbitrary based on you all having a conversation, I'm fine with, you know, moving the dates of the timeframe up a little bit, or extending it a little bit.
Mr. Chair?
Mr.?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I call this the Habitat Fence Rule. Because that's where, that's where this thing, whole thing, came from like that. These are, these are conditions that are all made in real time here, and they're agreed to or they're not. Granted, I know that there may be, oh, on second blush, gee, this will cost us something, but certainly, seven days, to me, does not sound unreasonable at all. You know, what 15 days sounds to me like is, oh, we have some time to negotiate. Let's renegotiate what the commission just, we just went through here, and that's when we'll get this back and forth, which is exactly what happened in the Habitat Fence Rule. So either you agree to the conditions or you don't, and I think seven days is actually kind of liberal, you know, it gives plenty of time. If you want to go back on your word, you can march out in the hallway and grab Rebecca and say, gee, I made a mistake, I don't want to do that, and that's fine. And then you, hey, you started the clock running for another year. So I, I, I agree. I think the seven days, I think you came down on it, and Jordan, I think that, you know, that was a fair estimation of it. These are decisions that are being made here in front of us, not meant to kind of divide and conquer, to make phone calls afterwards and go, jeez, I didn't, you know, that fence, really, if it was 100 feet, I would be better with it. Can we do this? And, you know, and does it have to really be a wooden fence? Can't it be a kind of a plastic fence and all that stuff? No, we made the rule here in front of all of us. Seven days is good with me and a one-year cooling-off period, so if you want to lose your project.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
You're not going to understand that, Commissioner's apple. I guess, I'm thinking about the word duress, and if my back's up against the wall, I'm trying to get a project done, you know, and I'm presented with, you got to do it now or else, I'm going to take the path of least resistance, at least to get my foot in the door. And I don't, I don't want us to, you know, put an unfair onus on someone to make a business decision within a compressed amount of time. Talk about another week to make, give someone the ability to make a better business decision, and I think that would be more fair, you know, to the community. And again, I hope that we can be, you know, easy to work with when it comes to what we're trying to accomplish in our community, and, but if you got to make a decision under pressure, you know, either you will or you won't. I'm not sure how that serves the greater community.
Mr. Chair, might I ask another clarifying question? Robert Endor, county attorney, do I understand you correctly that we don't have anything in there right now? We've just been utilizing the script language, and the recommendation is to have some amendment to the UDO, and then we can decide on the number of days that we think are appropriate? Or is there already a rule that's in place that's within our UDO as regards to this issue?
I don't think there's anything in your UDO that addresses this.
That, that's, that's correct. The language in the script functions as a form of another condition on the approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a comment, I think, I'm fine with the seven days. I get what Commissioner Barfield's saying, that makes some sense, too. I would think for staff, it would make more sense that you would want to go ahead and close it out in seven days and not drag it on for another 14 days or 20 days or, you know, I would think it would make, if I came here on a, on a night like tonight, I would be prepared to be there tomorrow morning to sign the document, but...
Mr. Chairman, could I offer some perspective? Staff did propose seven days. The, the planning board disagreed, but we try to be responsive to those that you appoint to make recommendations. The staff believed 20 days was unreasonable. Seven is where we started, but to show good faith that we do listen to your advisors, the staff felt, and our office felt, that we could live, for lack of a better word, with 15 days. But this is all a matter of staff being responsive. The board had not given directive on how long it should be. We proposed what we thought was appropriate. Planning board had different feelings, but again, to be responsive to the men and women that you appoint, we, we wanted to show good faith. And so that is how we arrived at this recommendation of 15 days. But no doubt, the staff original version was seven.
Okay, well, that makes sense. I mean, I can, I can understand, it's five, seven business days, so it's, we have a meet on Monday, it's till Tuesday the other next week. I, I think that's fine personally. I don't know why you don't keep up with who's still got 15 days out there.
There's nothing to change it.
That's just what I think. I'll do whatever y'all, whatever y'all want to do.
A little bit different.
All right. Thank you, Robert. You saved that for last, didn't you? Anybody got any ideas, discussion?
You know, you used to follow, I'm just going to repeat myself, but, you know, 15 days sounds like negotiating time, and the negotiating happens here, not between our planning staff, not between, again, phone calls, which I know we all get, and which is not right. If we're doing a project or a public hearing here, it should all be done here, and it should be done. I mean, there's really no reason-
How many people do we have that fall through the cracks with seven days? How many have we had in the past year?
We've not had any.
So everybody's done what they're supposed to?
Yes, sir.
Well, if you give them less time, it's going to be more urgent for them to go ahead and get up there and take care of the paperwork. I mean, usually, I think before they get here, they know if they have to build a fence, or they know if there's going to be certain things that are probably going to be required. I mean, so I'm good with seven days.
Yeah, I'll just add that while staff came up with the number of days, seven days, to me, it was directly related to our discussion, where we said, whenever we approve something, you need to make a move on accepting whether or not you're going to go under the terms that we've agreed to at the hearing, and if not, it's coming off for a year. And I think seven days better reflects that. Seven business days, I think, actually extends into, well into the next week-
Yeah.
-because the weekend would not be included in this. We're, we're probably going over this unnecessarily. I'm prepared to move to approve the amendment, but I'm going to say seven days rather than 15 days.
Well, you can write it in.
All right, I move to approve the proposed amendment to the New Hanover County Unified Development Ordinance to specify an applicant's refusal to sign the required agreement to conditions and conditional rezonings within seven business days of approval by the Board of Commissioners as an automatic denial requiring a one-year waiting period before resubmital. I find it to be consistent with the purpose and intent of the 2016 Comprehensive Plan because it provides up-to-date zoning tools. I also find approval of the proposed amendment reasonable and in the public interest because it provides for clear and effective ordinance standards.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Four to one. Okay. Okay, appointment of voting delegates to 2024 North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Jonathan, Commissioner Barfield.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Call opposed?
He said nay, yeah.
Okay, committee appointments. This one's going to be easy. Airly Gardens Foundation Board Directors.
Teddy Davis.
Teddy Davis.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. New Hanover County Cooperative Extension Advisory Council. Two back to see, we got one.
Yeah. Glenn McIntosh.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. New Hanover County Inspections Department Advisory Council.
Mr. Chair, I'd nominate Johnny Millam, Adam Sisk, and Sean Sweeney.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Is the board agreeable to moving Mr. Oul?
That's the advisory council.
On the fourth bullet point under requested actions on IDAC?
I am.
Likewise.
Yes, ma'am.
Kim, do you need a vote on that or not?
It would be nice, thank you.
I make a motion that we move Mr. Oul to the commercial builder category and then readvertise the at-large.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay, New Hanover County Parks and Recreation Board.
Mr. Chair, I'd nominate Mary Ellen Lavoy.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. New Hanover County Planning Board.
Mr. Chair, I propose that we reappoint Kevin Hine, Hanson Matthews, and appoint Kaitlin Roanhouse.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Trium Health Resources, this one is one I would love to put Julie Varnum on from New Hanover County Schools.
Yeah.
Think she'd be great at that?
I agree. Second, that, if that's a motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think we're there. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chair, very, very briefly, I just want to share something that I, I believe will hopefully be reported in further detail in this week, within this week, but apparently over the weekend, one of the folks who works with us, New Hanover County Fire and Rescue Captain Steve Hunt, had an occasion to come across a man who was in distress in the Cape Fear River and put himself at risk to get into the river and extract this man out of the river, thereby in all likelihood saving his life. And that is something that he did off the clock and just exemplifies the sort of people that we have here in New Hanover County. Our fire department, as we know, is full of very wonderful people, and that certainly includes Captain Steve Hunt, Captain Hunt. I want to say thank you to you for your bravery.
I'd like to say something also. My, my daughter and son-in-law and grandkids were at the dude camp in Wyoming, and they were at supper. The manager came and talked to them and asked them where they were from, and he told them. And they said, well, that's where we hire all the kids that work here, from is North Carolina, South Carolina. I said, why is that? He said, because they're already nice. You don't have to teach them that. And after saying all that...
I just want to ask Crystal, a follow-up on that letter I passed to you that we all got a copy of about the emissions. I don't know a whole lot about it or why, but if you would just maybe let us know later.
Yes, ma'am, I've already made a note. Crystal has it to share with, with the team who can evaluate.
I'm referring to the letter we were all given from a lady about the emissions testing for the vehicles. I don't know why we're in that, but...
Mr. Chair. Quick notice, I want to say thank you to all my fellow commissioners for your support. I was nominated and unanimously elected to become the District Four Director for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners.
Fantastic.
So I greatly appreciate all your support.
Thank you, Rob.
And thank you for serving, Rob. I don't know where you're going to fit that in your schedule, but...
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to encourage everyone here to become a grandparent. It's the greatest thing. Do it as quick as you can, become a grandparent. It's one of the greatest things.
Yes, sir.